This is a meeting of the Provo Municipal Council Economic Development Retreat. It is 7:43 a.m., Thursday, August 17th. We're meeting here at the Reserve in the Provo Town Center. This meeting is being recorded and will be available reviewing on YouTube Provo City Council after the conclusion of the meeting. We're not live due to some internet difficulties. We'd like to begin with a roll call. We'll start with you, Mr. Parker.
Wayne Parker.
David Harding.
Kim Santiago.
Gary Winington.
Dave Sewell.
Cave M. Duro.
George Stewart.
Cliff Strachan.
Thank you. The opening prayer this morning will be offered by our Executive Director, Cliff Strachan.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the opportunity to serve the residents of Provo and the businesses of Provo. We're grateful for the contribution that our council and our leadership and our community members make to our community. We're grateful for, Father, for the opportunity to meet with some business leaders today to hear of their experiences and their wisdom and that collectively we can seek out opportunities to expand the economic pie here in Provo. We ask, Father, a blessing on all our residents, that they may realize the ambitions of their lives and that we can serve each other well. We ask a blessing on the food breakfast this morning, that it will make us well. And in all things, Father, we're grateful for the freedoms and the liberties that we enjoy in this country, in this state, and in this city, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping items to start with. As far as the acoustics, we've been instructed to tell you to be sure and speak up. The microphones will pick up our conversation very well for the recording, but a few people have noted it's a little bit hard to hear each other in here, so please make sure to speak up. We'd like to thank Dixon Holmes and our Economic Development Team for putting this together for us this morning. We're excited these past few months to be learning more about what you're doing and goals and objectives and have this opportunity to meet again and to get a more in-depth look at some of these things this morning. We'd also like to thank Scott Bowles and the Provo Town Center Team for offering this facility to us to be able to have the meeting here this morning. We'd like to begin by acquainting ourselves as a council with those who've come to present and participate and are those who are here to learn about retail in Provo. We're excited to have this event where we can bring the business community together with the council to talk about economic development and how we can support each other. So we'd like to go around the room. Please state your name, what organization you're affiliated with, and your purpose for attending. So I guess we'll start here at the table and then work our way around the room from there. I'll begin. My name's Dave Sewell. I'm currently serving as the Chair this year of the Provo City Municipal Council, and we're all here to discuss retail and better learn how we can benefit the business community here in Provo.
Cave M. Duro, a member of the City Council.
George Stewart, a member of City Council. Cliff Strachan, I work for the City Council.
Dixon Holmes, Deputy Mayor with Economic Development.
Elizabeth Vandermark, Executive Assistant.
Bryce Hunter, Director of the Council.
Wayne Parker, Chief Economic Development Officer.
Dave Harding, I'm on the council and I represent the downtown area which has a lot of commerce.
Kim Santiago. I'm on the City Council.
Gary Winington on the City Council.
I'm Stewart Thane with CBC Advisor of Salt Lake City.
I'm Elizabeth Leader and with CBC Advisors.
I'm Howard, I'm also a CBC advisor.
David Walter, Community Development.
Chad Tompkins, Provo City Development.
With Peterson, downtown Provo.
My name's Mark Isaacson with Westport Capital Partners, the owner of the Old Plum Tree Shopping Center.
Scott Bowles, Dear Manager of Provo Town Center.
I'm Jijia Harry Rickert, LEC at Shops for the Woods.
Odell Meyer. Bernie Fromager of Provo.
Karen Tumplegate, Councilwoman.
And Brett Borgh gets here filming with his colleague.
John Sutcliffe.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate all of you for being here. So our first item this morning is a presentation and a discussion on the retail landscape here in Provo, and this is going to be presented by Stewart Thane of Caldwell Banker Commercial.
All right. Can you hear me okay? I appreciate being here and the opportunity to sit down with Provo City. I've spoken a few times at some of your earlier events over the years, and so I look forward to these kind of deals. We do this quite often with cities and counties in regards to sit down and talk about, you know, what's the future of retail, you know, why can't we get certain things and all those kind of good things. So my history is I've been born and raised here in Utah. I've been doing retail for over thirty years. Probably been involved on eleven or twelve million square feet of retail along the Wasatch Front in the state of Utah over that timeframe. So I don't, I think the only reason they think we're expert is, is I'm just older. I think gray hair brings with it some kind of legendary thing that you know all the answers. But we do, we are involved in a lot of projects and we do represent a lot of tenants, tenants from, we're gonna, when Shake Shack comes here in a couple of years, we're gonna bring them in and we do the work for them all the way up to, from Ross to Nordstrom Rack to REI to Costco, those kind of guys. So we've been pretty fortunate over the years, done a lot of work in Utah County over the years. So, and part of what I, what I like to do in these, we used to give a presentation, I used to lay out, we'd give you all kinds of statistics and all that stuff, which at the end of the day didn't mean a whole lot. And I realize that you guys are meeting here for a reason, and part of that is, is try to figure out what it is and what you can do to help bring retail into Provo City. So let me give you just kind of my, and these are just totally my thoughts in regards to current retail situation, not only in Utah, but I think across the country right now. You know, the internet is obviously a big deal. Keeps, seems like it keeps, you know, building and all you have to do, say, Amazon and, you know, Costco stock drops twenty percent, you know, and they buy Whole Foods for whatever the reason. And so it's, it's kind of like the internet is taking over the shopping world. And from my perspective, I think it's something you have to deal with. I have a sister-in-law that works for Nordstrom's up at Fashion Place Mall and manages a portion of that store, and it was interesting chatting with her the other day. They had their half yearly sale, and she told me that fifty percent of the sales in that half yearly sale were online this year, which is the most they've ever had, which in my mind, for a sell like that, having four daughters that went to that pretty religiously for twenty years, it was the euphoria of going there and the shopping and finding the stuff, and now fifty percent of that's happening online. And the interesting part of that was, is almost fifty percent of the product that was bought online was returned. And I see that with, with my daughters, is, and that's what drives me crazy about the internet, and I'm not an Amazon member or anything like that, but it, it looks so great on the catalog, but when myself or my daughters get that, it's, it doesn't quite look the same, it doesn't quite fit the same, and so you end up sending a lot of that stuff back. But it is a formidable thing that's happening in our country. But at the same time, you know, you see companies like Best Buy, Barnes &amp; Noble, those kind of companies that are figuring it out and how to deal with it. Barnes just hired a real estate manager for the first time in seven years, which to me is a positive sign of what's going on. You know, they haven't closed one of the stores in the five states that we've done their work for them. You look at Best Buy, Best Buy's figured it out now in regards to selling higher-end appliances. They've got the Geek Squad, they have all these things that they're competing now with online sales. Even Nordstrom's nowadays, you can get online, you can order your stuff and go down to the store in a couple of hours and pick it up. There's a lot of things like that that are taking place across the country. But at the same time, one of the best things, I think, going for us is that we live in the state of Utah. In the last six months, we've had quite a few retailers, restaurants in our market taking them on tours, absolutely floored on the amount of construction and what is going on in our market, especially for what they would call a smaller kind of mid-market, you know, in the United States of, you know, three million people. And so it's been interesting in regards to that. We had all the guys from Costco in town a couple of weeks ago, and they're absolutely just surprised because some of them hadn't been here for a couple of years on the construction and what has happened in our market. And so retail-wise, you know, what we see here is same-store sales are strong. Interesting thing about us, and we all know that because we live here, is we're not like Phoenix, we're not like Denver, where you can go out three miles and build another eight-hundred-thousand square foot shopping center. And so what we're seeing now and a lot of stuff we're working on is redevelopment stuff. And for what it's worth, I'm sure a few of the projects we're working on will probably never be around to see them open, just because they take time. You know, South Salt Lake, we're doing a deal there with the Boyer Company, and we've been working on that since 2009, and this fall Wincow will finally open up. But the project's also changed from being all retail to now a mixed-use project of almost four hundred apartment units, along with a Wincow and two retail pads.
Can I, are we allowed to interrupt you in those questions?
Absolutely, that's the whole goal of this, yeah.
Okay, but why were they so surprised when you say Costco and everybody was surprised at the size of our market and what we're doing? Why were they surprised? Did they expect not as much? Did they expect, why were they, tell me about the surprise?
They're surprised in the amount of new construction that's going on. So one of the things we did, when these guys come into town, they like to go to these open houses. So we were out in kind of the Saratoga Springs, South Jordan area, and walked into a few of those places, and everybody told us the same story, and that is that, that their home sales out there are three times faster than they had anticipated, and that now they can't deliver homes in six months, it's taken them eight months just because they don't have the subcontractors in order to build these things. They can't deliver lots now because of that until November, and every house you see that's got a foundation on it is sold.
So it appears, it sounds like they're surprised at the growth of the community?
Yep.
And is that, and are they saying that spurred the growth of the retail, or what is, or what's the?
I think, I think it's just the growth. You know, the airport's under construction on three billion dollars, you got the prison that started construction yesterday, you got Amazon gonna build a big warehouse out there, you got UPS under construction. You go down the I-15 corridor, you got all these high-tech companies under construction. You know, there is some retail under construction in regards to all of that, but I think part of what they're talking about is, is the influx of people coming into our market. At the percentage that they're coming in and the type of jobs that are being created here and the diversity of our economy is basically unheard of. You know, Austin, Texas, a few places like that. And that's what they're surprised about. And some of these guys have been here, you know, six or eight times over the last fifteen years, but just the amount of construction and the office buildings, industrial, and what's going on here is a huge factor, but it also plays into now our construction costs are thirty to forty percent higher than they were, you know, eighteen months ago.
That helps, thank you.
So in regards to that. So, so as far as the, you know, our retail market in Utah, I believe is pretty strong. Deals aren't easy. One thing I think, when we talk to the cities and the counties in regards to this, the biggest thing I see right now that cities can do is that they have a relationship, and I brought this up a couple of years ago when we spoke, that they, they work with the developers and the owners of your shopping centers. You know, retailers are a finicky, a finicky group, and they're also like a bunch of lemmings. You get a couple of them and all of a sudden they just all pile on in regards to, you know, where they locate. And so the greatest thing I look at what cities can do is, is have a strong relationship with the people that own the shopping centers within your community. And you may have a Costco or a Shields Sporting Goods or somebody one day show up, and to them, what they're gonna ask you is, is how fast can we get open? You know, what's the entitlement process? And walk through all that stuff. And if you, if you tell them it's a year, eighteen months, they're gonna tell you, you know, that, that doesn't work for us. You know, you look at the Costcos of the world, and they build their stores in a hundred and twenty days from start to finish. Okay, their, their process, when they get here, and they're, they say, we want to go, and when you're averaging a hundred and seventy million dollars a unit, they want to get open and they want to start doing business. And so it is so important for the city and the developers to work together in regards to what it takes to get those types of tenants in here, you know, because they're on a timeframe, and there are lots and lots of opportunities in the country. It's different than it was twenty years ago, I wish it was twenty years ago, because we had at least three retailers in every category, and you usually had them fighting over locations, and rents would go up and all those types of things. Today, it's totally different. You know, there's a, there's a few soft-good retailers that are doing business, Ross, TJ Maxx, you know, Burlington Coats doing a couple of deals, but there's not, there's not what there used to be to where, you know, we would have seven or eight soft-good options when we develop a shopping center.
So you said, you've been working with Wincow since 2009?
Yes.
And that's not a hundred and twenty days?
No, no, no.
Help me understand.
No, we start, we worked on, we started on that project in 2009, and it's taken us that amount of time to get it to a position to where now we did a deal with the Wincow on that site, and they're under construction. So it took us that long to just put together the pieces of ground with the city and everybody else to make that so it was a viable deal.
It's redevelopment areas, so there was a lot of a sandwich of land?
We, yeah, we put together, I believe, thirteen or fourteen property owners just on that. Originally, it was a lot bigger project.
And were you working with Wincow the whole time, or did you?
No.
You just put together the land and then you went out to find a Wincow or something else?
And understand this, timing is everything. When we first began, that Wincow had no interest. Timing is everything, and all of a sudden you get into a position, their retail sales change, their motivation changes. You go from doing a lot of stores in Idaho to we're gonna do some more stores in Utah, and we happened to be there on this site, and we made the deal with them. And that's where I go back, the timing on these things, in my mind, is everything. And when they're there, you've got to figure out how to make the deal. Perfect example is the Shields Sporting Goods thing, when we went to Sandy City, and Steve Shields flew into town, sat down with the city, and they started to go through the process. And he's like, the problem is, is you just told me we're nine months to a year to get this thing done. He said, this is what I'd like to do, I'd like to get all of you from your city council to the development department, to permitting, all that, we're gonna put you on an airplane, we're gonna fly you out to Sparks, Nevada, and we're gonna walk you through our store and tell you why we need what we need and why we're doing what we're doing, and why our plans are what they are. And so they did that, spent two days out there, literally came back, and in forty-five days, everything was approved. So as opposed to be potentially a year-long process of going through with changing a few things on the documents and all that, it was explain to them why they need what they need and the process they go through. And now you go up there and see the deal happens, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand feet, and it's made a huge impact in that sector of the valley. And they give back to the community, I mean, there's just a lot of things to them, so in regards to some of those big tenants like that. But, but right now, I think that is probably the biggest thing out there for people to do in regards to development and cities, is to, you gotta work together, if not, it just doesn't happen. And, and there's just not a lot of these tenant deals out there. You know, we, we've got cities come telling us right now that, you know, they, they don't want to do a Walmart deal, and I'm like, well, the issue is, is Walmart's pretty much the only guy doing any deals. You know, Target, there might be a chance of a deal here and there, but they're not active at all. Home Depot and Lowe's, nothing cooking. Costco, there might be one deal here, but I think Walmart right now has probably six or seven deals in the state of Utah, you know, in, in the process of being entitled. And, and sometimes you've got to do what the market bears, you know, in regards to that, and it tells you where the market is from my perspective. You know, you go into Nordstrom's store and you walk into Walmart and you look at the comparison, you look at the sales, you know, and it's an interesting process right now. But, but retail is what it is today, you know, and then things change, just like in South Salt Lake. We had these visions of, we had a couple of retailers that weren't in Utah yet, and we'd worked with them for a couple of years, and, you know, it just didn't work out, and we ended up doing housing and, and the Wincow and a couple of pads. So, but I do think that our market's gonna stay strong. I don't see anything hindering what's gonna happen in Utah. The biggest thing is probably opportunity. You know, Costco comes to town and asks us to find nineteen acres on the east side of Salt Lake Valley, and, and, you know, it's just not, you know, almost impossible to find that stuff. So, you know, that's the biggest thing for us now is, is opportunity. And I think as far as the city goes, you know, and we've done a lot of work down there, we've been working on this East Bay deal for, I don't know, five years, it seems like five years. It's a long period of time, and it, hopefully now it's gonna come to fruition and where that's gonna get out of the hands of the current owners and end up being a deal, because there are a couple of national deals, I think, that could be made there that can really help kind of bolster that area again. I think one of the things we're learning, and that was a big talk at ICSC, is entertainment. Entertainment, I think, is becoming a huge deal across the country. You see things like Top Golf. There's a few things floating around here, I just heard that Big Owls maybe made a deal up at the, up at the mall. You know, tough, tough economic deals, but those are kind of game-changing type tenants, not only for a shopping center, but for a whole market and a trade area. And, and people always wonder, why do they do it? Well, you just see what happens and what those kind of tenants bring in, and then there'll be another, you know, fifty or a hundred thousand square feet that'll follow those guys just because of what they pull in and the amount of traffic they bring into the market. So entertainment to me, I, my two youngest daughters, who are in their mid-twenty's, they don't spend near the money on clothes, but they travel, one of them travels all over the country and even the world, rock climbing, you know, and they, they don't care so much about the clothes, they want the adventure. And they work at Momentum Gym and do those types of things, and those kind of things, I think, are becoming more and more popular, especially with the younger generation, and her and her husband both teach there, and they teach kids from eleven to fourteen years old on how to rock climb and play and do all that kind of good stuff. And so I think for, for cities to look at, what can we do to create something within our city, I think you gotta look at those types of uses. Things are changing, you see it with the regional malls. We're asked every other day, what do we do with our mall? And, you know, part of me, I'm not sure. You know, department stores seem to be struggling a bit, maybe more than a bit with, you know, Macy's and Penny's and Sears, what's going on? So what do you do with those kind of, you know, if they were to vacate? You know, Valley Fair Mall, the Macy's is shut down, what do you do with it? And I think that some of that, you know, the jury's still out a bit. But I go back to, I think that's how important it is that cities, the public and private sector work together hand in hand when that opportunity comes along, that you're prepared to move forward and move quick on these things to make it happen.
When you mentioned Top Golf, do you, do you know what the relationship was with Top Golf in Vegas? Was it the hotel that brought Top Golf? Was it just Top Golf wanted that location because it was close enough to the strip? Do you know how that happened?
You know, what we hear, and I have a good friend of mine, and they, they own most of, they own, I think, twenty-three of the twenty-six Top Gols, but, but I think the, the casino down there wanted them because they realized the impact and the importance of drawing that many people in. I don't know how many of you, if you have even been there, but their big thing is, is great food. It's not crappy food, the food's fabulous, it's entertaining, anybody can go. You don't have to be a pro golfer. You know, I've got my five and seven-year-old grandson go all the time with their dad, and they just love it, just to go hit golf balls. And, and those are the kind of things I think you have to look at, they're gonna help draw people in what you're trying to create there. You know, you look at what Mark and they were trying to do at the mix, so it's how do, how do you turn that into a destination? You know, I look at Station Park, we were involved in Station Park for eight years, you know, and it's a water fountain, it's a music show, it's all that kind of stuff, but it draws people there, you know, in regards to that. So what do you do to create that within each community? You know, you look what Sandy City's doing, you know, you look at what South Jordan and some of them are doing. So what can you do as a city to find an area and create a, a location that will be an attraction, that will draw your people, not only from Provo City, but from the outside markets, to cause them to come in and spend time within your city? Because when they do, they usually spend money. And to me, that, that is the, the new kind of buzz out there is, is you gotta create a, a place for people to come, meet, be entertained, whether it's a five-million-dollar water fountain, whatever those things are, that, that is what, that is what's having to take place now in order to draw people in to your area and into a shopping center. And you go look at some of the new centers, it's pretty interesting what's happening. Within, within those, it's more than just, you know, walking door-to-door like the old power centers, you know, you gotta create something a little different, you know, which in my mind, that, that's Utah. I mean, we're all about community, we're all about, you know, the people here, that's why we've got so many people moving in here, you know, and so we need to create those kind of spaces and those kind of places for people to go and put them within these shopping centers and, you know, big mixed-use projects. I don't, I don't know how many more shopping centers we're gonna actually see developed. I think there's gonna be, I mean, you know, back in the day, they didn't like gyms, they didn't like anything that people would stay more than an hour, the big shopping centers, that's totally changed now in regards to that.
Stewart, are you seeing those type of ideas created by business in conjunction with cities, or are cities actually going out and doing it themselves, or both?
You know, I think it's gotta be in conjunction with the development in regards to that, because what you want to do is, you want to take advantage of what's there. I mean, you want to take, you, you, you know, you can go out and create a park, which is great, but boy, if it's me, I want to put a smaller park within three-hundred-thousand feet of retail and, you know, four-hundred apartment units and six-hundred-thousand square feet of office.
So are you seeing the developer come in and say, I want to build a park and I'll get increment or something like that to help me do this?
Yeah.
But it's the developer that is actually creating that?
Yeah, and that's the only way it's gonna happen, though, is the city again to get involved, because you really don't get income. Station Park gets no money off the fountain they built, but what it does is it attracts, you know, they can give you whatever number it is, a certain number of people per day, and based upon that, the retailers up there seem to be doing fairly well, and the food guys are hitting it out of the park up there because of that.
I wonder, with the Mall of America in Minneapolis?
Mm-hmm.
They've already done this, they have used the park right in the mall?
Yeah.
And I wonder how, how that's working for them? Is it something that they have to recreate? Do they have to change that, that activity focus as, you know, the years go by? Because they've been doing that for, on the decades probably.
Yeah.
And is that something they have to reinvent? The, the attraction part of that, do they have to reinvent that as time goes by, or do you feel like that's?
I, I think you gotta step with the times. I think there's, that's, it's constantly moving. I mean, how many of you have been in the Shields store? I mean, they got a Ferris wheel, okay? Not many retailers have a Ferris wheel in them. We're doing a little store called Soft Surroundings, okay, which is a, a women's store for usually fifty years and older, and they spend one-point-three million dollars on the interior of their store to create an experience for them. So when, so when the ladies walk in there, it's not just a store, it's more than that. And that's what we're seeing. The issue is, is there's not many developers, and, you know, Mark's probably the anomaly, that could put one-point-three million dollars in forty-four-hundred square feet. But, but some of these retailers are realizing that's what it's taken to make these things work, and so they're putting their own money into it. You look at what Costco does, and everybody always asks, how did they do it? Thirty percent of that store can change every day. So if you don't go in there and you see it, and if you don't buy it, and you go the next day, it could be gone. So what have they created? You know, they've created now that everybody goes in there, it's a three-hundred-dollar bill to get out, because they've created this euphoric thing that if I don't buy it today, it's gone. And it's true, and so they've created, thirty percent of their store is that. So, so it's creating things like that from the retailers, you know, that, that's a huge benefit to help attract people and to make people spend. to help attract people and to make people spend money. And I was told to be brutally honest, so one, one thing over the, the years, and it's not a Provo issue, it's not an Orem issue, but, but Utah County has been, for whatever the reason, retail sales and restaurant sales down here have been average at best and most of the time below average, if you took the markets within the Wasatch Front or even the counties. Like Davis County would be, I better be careful on the numbers I go, but probably ten to maybe twenty percent higher in the retail stores than what they are in Utah County. Now, there's a few stores down here that are doing exceptionally well, um, you know, but at the same time, across the board, you know, it's, it's just an average market in Utah County.
Okay, Stuart, is that because of our income or is that because of our mentality? Or help me understand why we're that way?
I wish I knew the answer to that. Yeah, and, and, and I don't understand it. I have cousins that live down here that have sold high-tech companies for lots of money. I ask them all the time, why, where do you spend your money? You know, why don't you shop here? I mean, why don't, you know, what, what's the deal? Because the numbers are, you know, and, and, we've been fortunate enough to be involved on a good portion of the mid-sized box deals and the major tenant deals. We have a, a pretty good idea what the numbers are and, um, and it, it surprises me in a market that's six hundred plus thousand people with the incomes and the influx of people and the type of jobs that are here, that the numbers aren't better. We, up around the mall, we did, uh, over the last, uh, probably ten or twelve years, we did five sit-down restaurants and now four of those are closed. And it's stores like Mimi's Cafe, McGrath Fish House, you know, it's not like Ruth Chris, those types of things. And so as you look at it, you know, I, I can't figure it out for the life of me, but I, I will tell you this, it seems like the last year that some of the sales are going up. We're privy to what Ross does and all their stores along here and, uh, and it's, and they're, they're bumping up. The Costco at, at the mall has kind of been flatlined for a number of years, is now creeping up. And so you, you, that's one thing I have never been able to figure out in regards to that. Whole Foods came down here and did their analysis and research and ended up not doing a deal. You know, Trader Joe's, I think, has made a deal down here and, you know, they're, they're just an anomaly. They'll be fabulous, I think, down here. But you look at it and you've got sixty-plus thousand students, you know, and, 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 you know, all the stuff we did along University Parkway up there and the noodles and all those kind of guys and they're just okay. And when we first went in there with that many students, you bring the people down there, like, holy cow, look at the traffic, the people, let's just make a deal and, and today that's changed a little bit. They're a lot more conservative in regards to that. And just because the numbers are just okay. In contrast to a Sugar House or a Fort Union or a South Town, you know, to where, you know, the numbers are, are substantially higher and I, I can't, I can't figure it out, so. But we keep trying. You know, we did the Nordstrom Rack up there and, and, um, and, uh, you know, a few of the other guys along the way there. Did the DSW at the mall and it's just, just okay. So, in regards to sales.
I think we do have a lot of frugal shoppers, people who are very conservative and, and their money for reasons, you know, they have to be or they just are that way, you know? Um, and those with a lot of discretionary income will fly to Vegas to shop. I mean, the, the inventory at the Nordstrom even in the mall in Orem is very different than the inventory in Vegas or other places and, and they know that and so they, they'll go where they can find what they, you know, wanna find, those with a lot of discretionary income. So, um, I think it is a, a little bit of a product of very conservative community, but we, in Provo, we see Orem pop, you know, stuff popping up everywhere and now we see Spanish Fork with stuff popping up everywhere. And I feel like Provo should be, should be able to do part of that too. And so, and, and retail sales are a big way, you know, paying for our city, um, infrastructure and it's nice when others can contribute to that and cool, you know, the people who are using our city and our roads and, so it, it's just something we're very interested in for, for those reasons too.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I wish I had the answer. We've done a few deals down in Spanish Fork. In regards to that, I think, you know, part of it is you gotta look at the existing ownership of some of the shopping centers. And Elizabeth and McCollin, I've been working on a deal at, you know, Ross still at East Bay for five years. And, um, but I think now and the next week, hopefully, there'll be a decision made to where that's gonna get out of the hands of the current owners who had pretty much no desire to make any deal to where, I think you'll see that change. And I think there's, I know some of the questions we got, you know, one was about a sporting goods store, one's about pet store. Well, I think, I think we can get Ross and I think there's a pet store that'll go with us there. We just need to get it into the right hands of people that are willing to do some deals. As opposed to, you know, not, and it, I mean, we've worked with that group for a long time. You know, nice people and all that stuff, but we just can't get a deal done. And we're, we're down only two points, so, and we've been at that spot for eight months, so. That store should have probably been under construction, getting ready to open and, and, um, but I think the new ownership will change that and you can see something change there. And I think you gotta look at areas like that. You got the mall across the street. You know, you've got East Bay, you've got all that along there. It's how do you turn that in and create that into kind of a little bit of a destination? You know, we looked at some maps and the QSR guys or the Quick Serve Restaurant guys and there's so few of them down there. And years ago, we did a little bit of research, the numbers for restaurants were stronger in that market than they were at the mall, which I was, that was interesting. But at the same time, there's not a format down there, a platform for, for Zal and some of these new guys, Blaze Pizza and all those guys to basically come in there. And so I'm hoping with the new ownership that you'll see some of that change and a little pad out in front there gets bulldozed and you start over again. And because, because the tenants are there, you know, especially these QSR guys, that's what's hot in our market right now. I mean, they're, they're a dime a dozen, they're paying grants and the volumes are there. I heard an interesting, um, statistic the other day, the, the first part of this year for the first time ever, that people have spent more money in restaurants than they have in grocery stores. So that was interesting.
QSR, give me some examples of those type of tenants.
That'd be like Zal, Cafe Rio, Blaze Pizza, all those little guys that are fifteen hundred to, you know, five thousand square feet that aren't full-service restaurants.
So those are the type of tenants that we do necessarily, a, a tax income thing, that we do it for the developer who would then go out and find those groups of people?
Yeah, and, and, and those are the kind of guys you gotta have right now. They're doing huge volumes. You know, and also at Chick-fil-A, one Chick-fil-A, you know, they're average now, like, boy, it's over four million per unit. In Utah, they've got units doing over six million dollars. Or remember, all you're trying to do is, is do a development in a place where people can come to. So when you start looking at those things, tenants make all the difference in the world in regards to what she put in there and the amount of traffic that's drawn there. You know, nobody would ever thought ten years ago you'd do a Chick-fil-A and all of a sudden, you know, your shopping center's gonna be, you know, it could thrive a lot more. And it, it really is the case today.
And I look at our East Bay and this mall, for example, these seem to be, this is how people could get here. It's easy access. They seem to be diamonds in the rough. Why are we not able to get the, the big tenants to come to those? It's so easy from the freeway to get on and off. What is our problem here?
Well, you know, I think, you know, part of it is, I think, you know, you're, you're dealing with a regional mall that is pretty much somewhat set structurally. You know, I mean, we were talking about this yesterday and I, you know, as you look at that and as you look at the front inch along University Avenue, you know, it's like, and, and I guess I'm no expert on this, but it, but it seems like you need a connection between University Avenue and the mall. You have elevation issues, you got all of that to where you could put some kind of throat in there. You could put these QSR guys along there that would go up into the mall.
Up to this mall here?
Yeah, up to Provo Town Center. But, but maybe there's some ability to do that. I think I heard they were doing a hotel and a few things like that, which are a benefit. You know, but, but nothing what those, to me in my mind, or those QSR guys will help do. Because what they're gonna do is they're gonna pull people out of Springville and Spanish Fork and Orem. They, they come to your market. And, and as we go in and create shopping centers, you know, and, and I hope we're a little different than other, you know, other brokers, but we've just been, we've done enough of these that we don't just walk in and take anybody that wants to go. You, you try to create a center that is gonna attract people, you know, in regards to the type of leases you put in there. And that's why, you know, the first fast food thing we go after is a Chick-fil-A. Because there's nothing, I mean, and, and my daughters eat there with my grandkids like four days a week. I mean, it's crazy what happened, but, but that's what happens. And so you go with those and you, you put those as a part of your center and you try to get as many tenants as you can that'll attract people from the outside and have a bigger trade area. You look at the south end of Provo down there and I believe that is the spot where you can have the ability to do that. And it, but it, I go back to South Salt Lake, it takes time. None of this stuff happens overnight. But when the tenants come knocking, you gotta be able to move and you gotta be able to make the deals happen because if not, they're gonna go to Spanish Fork or Springville or somebody else because they've got it, they wanna get so many units open in a period of time. And especially right now when those things are rolling. And you, you think, you think what your habits are, you know, and that's why I normally do is go, go around the room and say, you, tell me, tell me where you shop, where do you eat, you know, where do you go? You know, some people won't say, because it's outside of the city, but it's like, that's the point of the whole thing is, is how do you then take that? And that's why I go back, in my mind, that it is so important for the city and developers, the public, the private partnership to work together to figure out how we can make the best out of this. Not only for the developer, but for the city, because that's all, that's what it's all about.
I think your, uh, your point's well taken about the activity centers. Because I, I know for me personally, we're eating on the run, so we're, we're adding to that, um, restaurant base. We're eating on the run most nights, um, because, you know, kids playing in a basketball tournament here or daughter in a volleyball or, you know, whatever you happen to be doing. And there's not a lot of time to be home making dinner. And that's the sad thing is when they're involved in lots of activities or you have multiple kids involved in activities, you really are just, you're eating on the run. And so I think one of the most important economic development things we could do is put in a regional sports park. Put in a, you know, something that's gonna draw people because I know, I know my behavior when I'm going to Salt Lake and I will stop at the Chick-fil-A or I'll stop at somewhere, you know, on State Street in, in Salt Lake to grab something because it's another hour before we get home and, you know, your kids are usually pretty hungry after they. So, um, yeah, I could, I could totally see that being a big draw for the southern end of our city if we could figure something out like that, where you have a lot of people coming. And if they're coming for a tournament and staying or whatever it happens to be, I could see that being a big draw.
And then that's, to me, that's what it's all about, figuring out how you can, how you can create those. And it's, it's different than it was twenty or thirty years ago. You know, people don't have time. And I always wondered where it all went, but, you know, because years ago, we could seem like we did. But now, you know, we, we don't have time. I, I look at myself and my wife and I, we're empty nesters. I look in the minutes, we go out to dinner four or five nights a week just because it's easier, you know, and it's almost sometimes even cheaper sometimes to go out and. But that, that's why right now in today's market, these QSR guys, I can count on my hand the last year, how many full-service restaurants I've been to. Okay, which is maybe four times, or the QSRs could do that in a week. And, and so that's what's there. In Utah, we have some unbelievable concepts that are created here that are now going throughout the country from Zupas and all those kinds of guys, Neaters. It's how do we, how do we get a group of those that come in and they go there? And food, Station Park, I mean, food's a huge deal up there. And then almost every tenant up there that we're aware of is doing exceptionally well because that's what they created. And you get a couple, and we just did a deal in Riverdale Road with Homer and Trubus. You know, at first it was like, what are we doing? All of a sudden we end up with Chipotle, we have a burger and all these guys. We've got an unbelievable lineup and the people are there. They're just all starting to open. We angered over the hobby we're being. It's unbelievable what's going on now and the amount of traffic because that's what people want. So you look at, even though Chipotle's got, you know, interesting news every once in a while, but they're still one of the best brands out there, you know, Starbucks. You don't have to drink their coffee. They got eight million other kind of weird drinks. You can go Frappuccinos, whatever they call them, that you can go drink. And so the, just the volume, but just having those kind of brands there. You know, we get people from out of town, the first place they wanna go is a Starbucks. You know, and, and so you gotta take all that into consideration. You gotta look at it as, as you decide what to do and how to do it. You know, and then there's something about these big brand names, and I go back to what I said earlier. Everybody says, so how do we, you know, so, so what do we do? And I'm like, just look at yourself. Think about where you go in a week. Write it down and then come back and look at it. And look where you shop, you know, you're probably what seventy-five or eighty percent of the, the valley's doing. And you start looking at that, okay, what would change that? What would change it to all of a sudden go to East Bay? I mean, how many of you go around East Bay or Provo Town Center? I mean, it's, there's, so certainly there's almost, unless you like Sam's and that, there's kind of no reason to go down there. Well, you know what? We gotta figure out, how do we create that reason? What do we have to do in order to put people in there to create it? You know, and, and it doesn't have to be a hundred and fifty thousand square foot retail deal. I mean, it can be as much as a Chick-fil-A, Chipotle, Starbucks together. And then all of a sudden, you end up with a Zupas and a Habit Burger and all those kind of guys, so, anyway.
When you do this, when you get, uh, so, a, a group of, do you have to do them all individually? Or are there groups that go together like?
Well, they, they all know each other. They know the kind of volumes they do and that's why they follow each other.
They do follow each other, but so you have to still do the individual deals?
You, you gotta figure out how to get the first two or three done and then, once you do that and, and, you know, you see a Chipotle that's gonna do, you know, two and a half, three million dollars out of the, the unit there. I mean, they, they, they all know what they're doing and so they know the traffic's gonna be there. You're sitting off University Avenue and you got thirty thousand cars a day. And, and they just realize this is gonna turn into the spot. And all of a sudden, yeah, that just expands and all of a sudden you got thirty thousand square feet of QSR guys there and it's really turned into a place. And, and so it's figuring out how, you know, how and where and, you know, how do you, how do you pull that off?
I, I think chaining those stores too and chaining the right kind of stores are what, like, I think of my, what I do, you know? And if I can, you know, hit, here's a, and a, you know, confession. No, but if I can hit Costco and the Apple Store, if you need something and, and banana, and then head down to Petco and Toys R Us and, I mean, you know, you think of all the things you need to do, a birthday party, something for the pets. You know, if you have all these things on one street, that's the draw. That's why I go north when I have to do a lot of, like, stopping and grabbing stuff, um, because it's all in one mile stretch, you know? And so I think if we can get those kinds of things chained together in the East Bay, would be a draw. And it'd be a draw for those south of us too, unless Spanish Fork gets it all. You know, if Spanish Fork gets it all, then I think we're stuck again, you know? Because everyone south of Orem will go, will stop there and, um, there's no reason to come to, to East Bay.
Well, and I think that's why you gotta create something different than what Spanish Fork's gonna do. Spanish Fork, and we did some deals down there and I think it's gonna be a nice center, but, you know, they got a Cinemark Theater, you know, you got TJ Maxx, you have Ross, you got Walmart, kind of the standard stuff. What's gonna pull people up past there? Something different than what's there. I go back to the entertainment venue, you know, in regards to, to, to what you could plug in there. And that's what you gotta look at. But I go back to, again, that the only way that happens is to have that private-public partnership that makes it work and that everybody's on the same page. So when that does show up and happen, you can move on it. Because the, the, you know, there, there's not a lot of them out there, but when they're here, you gotta make it happen. And, um, you know, you got, I mean, the Shields Sporting Goods guys do one deal a year and they probably have fifty or sixty options to look at. And these are cities willing to give them anything and everything. And so you look at it and it's like, okay, so what separates ourselves? How can we do that? And I go back, that most cities and developers are disjointed enough that if you could figure out, and when we chatted two years ago, that's- out, and when we chatted two years ago, that's what I chatted about was, is the best thing you can do is know your tenants within your city and know the developers that own the real estate and become best friends with them because that's, that's what's gonna end up making these deals happen, so. Cause it's tough, it's expensive. These deals aren't cheap. You know, a hundred and fifty bucks a foot to build these buildings now and it's, I mean, it's expensive. But, but you, if you don't do it, you're, you know, they're, they're gonna end up creating it elsewhere, so.
Stuart, I know that you may, had a lot to do with Shields going up there. Did, would you say the city made out on that? Cause they gave up a lot to get Shields there from what I understand and what you talked about before. How does the city make, is, are people, because their sales tax is gone for...
Yeah, well, what, so what they did up there, they did property tax, not the sales tax. Um, and with the school board, school, uh, since school board, school district, everything else, uh, they didn't, they didn't give a hundred percent of that up. And sometimes, sometimes you hook these tenants enough that they'll come off what they originally told you they would have to have in order to make the deal. So the original deal he told us we would have to have was substantially different than what we ended up with there. But you look at what we've created there now and what's gonna happen now with all that stuff on a hundred and ten south, the amount of traffic it drives more than makes up for anything, you know, that the city and, and that they gave up over, especially over time now, just because that, that area's, except for the Whole Foods, that only was there eighteen months, has been, has been pretty dang strong. Um, you know, Home Depot's numbers are up and, and you're gonna see a lot of other development happen around there now. And you look at the office and, but you know, it's a play, I mean, they create, and that's what he does, he creates his own place of being within their own store. I mean, you can go in there and do the Walk of Presidents, you can go in there and go bowling, you know, and shoot little target guns.
How many years did that Shields property tax increment go?
I have to, I think it was fifteen.
Fifteen?
Mm-hmm. And it was a, only a portion of it.
Just a po, but a substantial portion.
Yeah, but, but, but they're, but they're such a good, good resident of the city and what they give back and, you know, they, they, yeah, so I better not say some of that, yeah.
So what you're saying is you bring in something good that attracts traffic, then it attracts other businesses, and in the end you don't have to subsidize every business because it becomes the place to be?
Correct, correct. That, that's a true statement. But, but, but you have, I truly believe you have to in the beginning in order to create it. And once it's created, then you can maintain it and you go from there, you know, in regards to what's taking place, so. But, but we're seeing, you know, we're seeing that, you know, we're seeing, where cities are helping out and, and doing what they can in order to get that. I mean, you do a Costco at a hundred and seventy million dollars a year, is what they're averaging, and you look at those numbers and what the city would get off of that and what they provide and now all of a sudden the trade area for the city has gone from being two or three miles to ten. So you're pulling people from ten or twelve miles away to your city to shop there, now all of a sudden you can create other things around that. And then that's the goal, I mean, Mark knows that. I mean, any developer, that's what you try to create. And, and it is changing, like I can't emphasize that enough, so it's, but it's figuring out, you know, who's the right tenant fit that's gonna help us create that and put that together? But, but the opportunities there, you know, we, like I said, we're fortunate. Our Costco guy covers the, the south and southwest and the, you have no idea how good you have it here, so, in regards to what we're seeing and just the overall activity, so. I don't know if we're going over time or... Any other, other questions? I don't know what else was...
Stuart, we get to, we, we find this with dealing with tenants, that there's almost an initial hurdle to get over, which has to do with the data. So it's effective buying income, it's drive time distance, it's traffic counts on the street. So we haven't talked much about that. Can you talk just a little bit about, and, and if the city experiences like we do, particularly with a large student population, tends to drive down average household income, how do you overcome some of those challenges or even, even if you face that and, and start talking about potential tenants?
Well, I think the biggest thing is you gotta have a project or a format or a place that you wanna try to create that with. So you, as a city, along with the develop, you know, developers or investors or owners of property within your community, it's deciding where do we wanna try to create that? You know, you, it doesn't have to just be one, you could have a couple throughout the city, but where, where, where do you wanna create that? What do we wanna try to do there? You know, and we were like, we just wanna put a Dick's Sporting Goods in there and call it good, you know, and then we just stay the status quo and, or we wanna try to create something. And I think those decisions have to be made. I think you have the traffic counts, you got the growth. I mean, every other day there's another article about the growth of Utah County and it came out the other day, in the next forty or fifty years, it'll be one point six million people here and one point seven million people in Salt Lake County. And we go out and look at Saratoga Springs and you look along the Wasatch Front, the only place that the Wasatch Front can expand in a larger amount is through Saratoga Springs, Eagle Mountain, out that area. Because there's land out there, the other places, you, you know, I don't think you're gonna build a road across the, uh, Great Salt Lake and those kinda things. So that literally is the only place that, that growth can happen. And so now you look at it, so, so how do we set ourselves up to take advantage of some of that growth? You know, the growth is gonna go south of us and Payson and all those areas. How do, wha, wha, what do we wanna do today to try to figure out? Cause as I said, none of this happens overnight, but I think you gotta have a plan in place. You know, I've, we've done a lot of stuff in Sandy City and they have this thirty or fifty year plan and, and, um, you know, where they want certain things to go. And I think it's always good that you sit down and try to figure out where is that spot? I mean, you got some major roads here, you're talking about UTA, some track lines and those kinda things. Sometimes those are good, sometimes they're bad, they cut off all the access into retailers. So you gotta be a little careful of that, but, you know, how, how do we put all this together? How do we, as Provo City, create a spot for people to, to come? And where is that? Is it, you know, you can do it at the mix, you got the mall down there, you know, and it seems like there might be some opportunity there to figure out what type of tenants can we put in that's gonna change that from the old nineteen eighties mall to now a place where people wanna come to? That's a different venue than just the department store. And what do you put there? Maybe there's more housing, you know? Again, you go back to the entertainment portion, you already got Cinemark Theater, you know, and how do we take advantage of all of that? You know, how do we create something out front of that that's gonna drive people there? And then that's all it is.
I'm thinking about the point of the mountain where Shields is, and then my two questions. One is, did the city help out with the, um, outlet mall? Did they throw in incentives to get that there or was, were they just excited about getting there next to, what's that?
Cabela's or Shields?
I'm sorry, Cabela's, yeah. So Cabela's, was, was it that the draw? Was it, um, Shields is in South Salt Lake, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Cabela's, sorry. Um, anyway, so what was, what, what did it take to get a Cabela's there and did the mall come after that? Or did they incentivize them to come? And then also the restaurants on the, on that interchange, that might be the most onerous place to get out of? And we still go there. And so I guess location is, is big, but the, the rooftops, clearly not there. The, you know, some of the things of those traffic counts, yes, and that ease of getting in, but getting out is onerous, right? You can't make it, you know, you can't get out of there very easily. So what were the incentives to get that kinda growth right there? Was it all the tech companies right there? Was it, what was the like driving force behind retail and the restaurants there?
I think it's a little of everything. We were involved on the Cabela's deal, um, you know, I hand out to the, at the time, the, uh, the owners of the property, they gave them a substantial amount of land for free in order to drive them there. Um, and, but I go back to the point that, you know, back then it was tough for the city, they'd just done the, uh, the, uh, deal of the street.
Micron.
Micron. You know, that didn't quite turn out the way they had hoped it would. Um, but now I go back and look at, you know, the developer who gave them a lot of land and, and I think there's some, a few incentives from the city, it's been so long, I can't remember, but, but, um, but now you look what it's created. And Cabela's brings in three million people a year to its front door. And that's helped, you know, be the foundation of everything that's going on. We're doing a project right across the street where the Chick-fil-A and all those guys are going and, and hopefully we'll have some other announcements here shortly on that, but, but that's what it creates and once you dig home, then all of a sudden you get a Harland's Grocery Store. It's a pretty spectacular store for a local grocer. Now I see all the food guys there, most of the food guys are doing incredibly well because of the offices that are there. There's still probably another two million feet of office that's gonna be developed there. Now you got hotels going in. That's where I go back to where, you know, you gotta start somewhere and you, and if the right deal comes along, you gotta figure out how to make that work economically for the city and the developer. Because in ten years, look what's happened down there. And, and if the, if the, they hadn't given the land to the Cabela's, I can tell you that the outlet mall probably wouldn't be there. And it'd be a lot different development in that whole area than it is today. But because it's, it, it just attracts everything and that is the, um, right now, you know, for the north end of Utah County. So, and, and, I mean, you, there, there are so many smaller QSR tenants that we fill both our buildings and they'll start construction on a couple more, we can fill those and so it's just turned into that. But I go back, that that's how important it is to make the right deal at the right time. Because it'll impact the city for years and years and years and years. Some of them, I, I could name them off and I wouldn't do that, but where they had opportunities and they didn't do it, now they're going back and begging us for the last seven years to bring a certain tenant into the market, but when we first went through there, they were, so anti-bike box, you know, so.
Tell me a little bit about redevelopment versus, I'd say Saratoga Springs, Eagle Mountain, lots of land.
Lots of land, yeah.
We're all redevelopment. That makes it, to me, makes it even harder because putting together little pieces that you talk about, having to do that. Is that viable? Are people really doing a lot of redevelopment? And who is handling the redevelopment? Is it a city itself or is it, again, a developer that will come here and do the redevelopment? Or, or how?
I think, you know, we've done a bunch of these. We did one in West Bountiful, Bountiful City, where the Costco and the Lowe's and all that's located. So I think we had like thirty-seven property owners and half of those were operating businesses. So it took us a number of years to put that together. We relocated a good portion of those, some of the, uh, the property owners just took their money as opposed to that. But, you know, then you go back and look what was created there and what's happened there with that whole strip along there.
And who put that together?
So, so that was in conjunction with Bountiful and Bountiful's, or West Bountiful, and then, uh, Johansson Thacker at the time was the developer on that. So they worked together, created the RDA, used those funds to go in and, you know, do the light study, do all that kinda stuff. Then all of a sudden, uh, Lowe's and the Costco show up and, and, you know, it's kinda, the rest is history in regards to that. And I think that's gonna be one of the, you know, the only ways now that we're gonna be able to do development along the Wasatch Front is redevelopment. And some of these places should be done and it should happen. You know, and you got freeway accessibility, you got great traffic counts and all those things, but you, you got a hodgepodge of buildings and those types of things. I mean, that's what RDA's are for, they're not to, you know, come and kick everybody out, but it's finding that piece of ground that'll work. You know, that can be of better use, it's gonna help impact the city for years and years and years. And what happens is, you see that created, now all up and down the street, you're gonna see everything kinda renewed in regards to that redevelopment take place on a smaller scale, but you gotta start somewhere. I, I think those, again, I go back to the public-private partnership thing, I think those are gonna be really important in the future in this state in order to do any kinda development. Just, just remember where do you go now? Unless you go to Saratoga Springs, do you go to Magna or Toowoa? And you go up north, far west, those kinda places? But where, where do you go in the, you know, the main, you know, where, where do you go in Provo? If Costco came to you guys today and said, okay, we wanna go here, where's Nineteen Acres? What would you tell them?
You know, the lake? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the issue, so, but, but also part of it is, is having an idea and understanding, okay, if, if a canal like that were to show up, I mean, we're with the Provo. And, and having that discussion in regards to where is the opportunity for us in the city? You know, what, what, what do we have? And then prepare yourself for that one, the day that were to happen, which could happen, you know, the, the, we have a pretty good idea of where we could make that happen, or we could create an RDA district or a CDA. I mean, it's not just, you know, one thing, an RDA, but different things like that that you could help out to attract them and get them there. Um, and, and like I said, I just, I think it's important that you look at that and fi, and just figure out where those best places are, you know? So, and then, and create that, start working on it. And in regards to that, talk to property owners, talk to some of the business owners. You know, the, the worst part is when you go in there and it's a shock to them that, that the city wants to do this. Well, there's been discussions going on for years and it's for the betterment of the city plus the businesses there. The amount of traffic that's gonna be drawn into that is kind of a no-brainer deal, but it takes time to educate people in regards to what it is that you're trying to do and why you're trying to do it. Not try to put them out of business because you're doing a land grab and all, it's, you know, it's just look at what's happened in some of these other markets, so. I mean, like what's happened in Sugar House right there?
So, to me, we have two problems. We lose a lot of tax dollars as people leave Provo to buy things that they can't buy in Provo. As simple as groceries, but other things too. So, we have tax leakage. We also can do better at attracting people to come and buy things in Provo, shop in Provo. To me, Cabela's was unique, it, it appeared almost like out of, in a, in nowhere, in a place that, why would you build there? Well, if you're the only one in the valley and people will drive a half hour, an hour to get to your place, it doesn't matter where you build almost. You're a destination, location or retail outlet. And having something unique that draws people, that you can't find in, in other parts of the valley, would bring people to Provo.
Right, it's the same issue that happened with IKEA. IKEA went in and that whole area became Furniture Corner, you know?
And then that, the reality was that was gonna go next in the middle of the one time, so, and it just didn't happen, so, ended up going around the corner. Just cause of certain things, so, it, it's, and that's the goal of the cities.
They're both still visible from the freeway, which we don't have that kind of land mass next to the freeway that's that visible. Even on Center Street, our, our freeway exit is so, you know, kind of convoluted that you don't really see the businesses on the ground as much as that.
Well, East Bay and this mall are right on the freeway, so.
Yeah, but as far as not redevelop, I mean, as far as, you know, having this open land, but it's not redevelopment, but it's not gonna have to have environmental or whatever, I, you know, we have Mountain Vista, we can draw someone to Mountain Vista, but it's not on the freeway, it's not on the, kind of this, you know, main corridor or something.
And I don't know what's happening with, you know, with the golf course, I know Boyer for years was working with Target and all that down there, you know? I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's, you know, I think they were just gonna build more of a power center type deal. I think you gotta look now at doing some a little different that's, um, that's what we've talked about, that's gonna give people a reason to come from Payson and American Ford to come to Provo.
Top Golf.
Yeah.
We could talk about that on the golf course.
Yeah, there, you know, there's, there's a...
Anything but golf, really.
Anything but golf.
So, there's, there's, there's...
There are no parks or restaurants.
There's, there's two new ones out there, they're starting to look around a bit, it's like Top Golf on the Taylormates, uh, funding and, you know, so, so, but now it's figuring, okay, well, so if they call this, what would we, where would we put them? And I mean, we're happy to stand with you and go through the step, we've done that in regards to, like at Google Earth and see, and that's the easiest way to do it because you see where all the MS is, you know, you've got the devs to do that kinda stuff. And then I think it's important that cities look at that just for what's gonna happen in the future, you know, it's not a good...
The deal that was done in downtown Ogden with the Junction, it was kind of the classic
The deal was done in downtown Ogden with the Junction. It was kind of the classic tear down the old mall and reinvent it to create a destination. For that. It seems like it's been pretty successful.
Yeah. What do you, that, you're looking Holiday, I think they all did, you know, Forty-Fifth South and Twenty-Thirties. You know, the Top Gear Twenty-Seven and almost it's, it's small, but it's plain. It's cool and it's packed. You know, it's just a little neighborhood type deal. But you get the right guys in there. Those are these local operators that are in and out of the park. And you guys have done a nice job in downtown. I mean, I just don't get down here a lot, but I mean, we hear four or five of the restaurants that ended up fabulous. You know, in regards to that, and it's how do, how do you take that now and maybe expand that a little bit? What kind of advertising can you do for them in regards to whether it's your own websites and those, not that you're gonna take sides. But I mean, I think you gotta get out the what, what is in Provo? And you, your downtown is this kind of, Elizabeth was saying, is a pretty cool little deal. You know, we were down here a week ago for some meetings and that's, you know, it's how do you build on that then? You know, and, and how do you make that happen? And there's, you still have lots of open space there. And you drive around the parking lots and different things. And it's, I mean, is that a place? Is that something that maybe will be our calling card would be? We've got this quaint, cool downtown with concerts and restaurants and that a lot of cities can't have or don't have. You know, so it's, it's looking at, you know, what, what do we think's the best thing for the city that we can get the biggest bang for a buck?
So there are reasons why people come to Provo.
Right.
I mean, over and above. I'm gonna go to Provo to shop. Uh, we have a great hospital.
Right.
And BYU and then the county C. So, if there still are reasons to come to Provo, how can we get them to spend their money while they're here?
I, I think you provide more opportunity. You provide different types of tenants, um, you know, to where they'll spend their money. You know, there's food, then all of a sudden you end up with all the cell phone shops. You know, you, you end up with some of the, you know, the, the soft goods type stuff, like, you know, Bath and Body and some of those types of tenants. And you start to formulate a, you know, a layout that, that you can take and plug those types of tenants in there. They're gonna help generate and create that draw and the people will spend more money there. You know, and, and I think, you know, your downtown's mostly, you know, food. But how to, how would you get a Victoria's Secret and a Bath and Body to come in or Ann Taylor Loft or some of these other ones in there? How would you create that? You know, and they still do well at Riverwoods. We do all the work for them and, I mean, they still do well there. So, you know?
Question about Riverwoods. At one point, they closed off some streets and parking and created more of a walking arrangement. And I've heard mixed reviews on that. Do you have an opinion?
Um, you know, I just go back to whatever the developers think that'll work for the area there. And I think the owners of that probably live right in that area and understand it pretty well. And I do know that I think people are app now. They like those types of things. It gets them out of the car. They can walk around. Um, as opposed to you pull up in front, buy what you want and you're out of there. So, so I don't think that's too bad of a deal. But I have a lot of history with that.
No, the teenagers are drawn to that because there's an amp in the middle of the aisle and they have entertainment at nine. In the woods where they have the fire, you know, the fire pits and in the summers, water and so little kids are there. So I think that, again, the entertainment factor has made a big difference for that area, drawing some of the people that may not just go in and be out there.
Right. And that's, again, I go back, that's what you try to create and put together and decide where within the city are those kinda pots gonna be? That we could do that. You gotta remember, access is everything. For whatever reason, we don't have time to drive around. We gotta pull up in front, go and get what we want and get the heck out. I mean, to the point where we order our food online, walk in, pick it up, leave, or walk in, pick it up and eat it and we're out of there in fifteen minutes, so. And it's pretty amazing when you start looking at your own time schedule and everything else on what you do and you realize, you know, we're talking about, but we actually do it. You know, and I'm not real good at the phone.
So, uh, we're, we're getting close to the end of our time for, for this segment, but I, I had a question for you specifically for the council. So, I, I look around the room and I see we've got several different teams working on economic development. We've got our, our, uh, economic development team here, four people working all day, every day on economic, economic development. We've got our RDA. We've got Downtown Provo Inc. So, as a council, as a legislative body, do you have any specific suggestions for how we can help in this effort? In terms of regulatory playing field and that sort of thing?
Um, you know, I, I, again, if I understand your question, I think the biggest thing is the, is to make a decision as a group on where you think there's redevelopment opportunity. Um, what have we got there? You look at the East Bay deal and there's only a few tenants in there. Sometimes that's not a bad thing. Because now it gives you an opportunity to look at it and say, what do we, what can we create here? What can we do here that also helps the mall? How can we potentially tie those two together a bit more that'll generate and create more traffic? You know, what are the types of tenants we could get in there that are twenty or thirty thousand feet that would really make a difference? And really help us out as opposed to just, you know, another tenant? Um, to me, I think that's the biggest thing, is understanding where you can actually do a redevelopment project that you're, you're capable of putting together. And, you know, South Salt Lake and the mayor up there, she's fabulous. And we originally went in there and it was like a hundred and fourteen acres. And we had unbelievable plans. We were gonna do, you know, twenty-five hundred housing units and all this stuff. The reality of it was, is the cost got pretty expensive in regards to that. So we just did the first phase, but now all of a sudden you see the second phase taking place. And you, again, you see how that works in regards to, you start somewhere and now it's, the ripple effect's gonna happen there. And I think as a city, you gotta decide and look into the future a bit in regards to traffic. You know, again, I go back to tracks lines. I have a son-in-law that works for UTA and they're working on these kinda lines. How all that comes into play and where would give us our best opportunity to make this happen? And, and remember, you know, I mean, I think the biggest thing on Riverwoods is it's just a long way from the freeway. So the biggest thing about that is, is the trade area for that is pretty small. When you look at people wanting to come there. Now, when Abercrombie first opened there, people drove from Idaho, you know, to go to that store. So, you know, times change a bit. They open additional stores and, but, but I think you gotta make a decision on where you believe that is. You know, and, and how do you go about work, everybody here working together to make that happen? And to me, that's the biggest thing. Because you, you know, there's always a few people that, you know, hey, we don't want a Costco or we don't want a Walmart or, you know, we don't want a Shields. And it's like, boy, you know, you, before you just say no, you gotta sit down and take a hard look at it. Because it can change the whole appearance and outlook of your city for fifty years. And that, to me, that's what redevelopment is. It's not just plugging a couple guys in there. It's, this is gonna impact this city and make it better for, for fifty years.
So if I could summarize your comment, it would be to have the council get more involved in long-range strategic planning?
Yep. I would do, I mean, I, I go back and, and this happens quite often, you know, and I'm just gonna use Costco because they're one of our good clients. You know, if Dave Messer was to come to town and we walk into the city and say, we need nineteen acres, I gotta have a store open by May of twenty nineteen, can we do it? And, and at that point in time, you guys could, you know, if, if you, you know, you look at this, is what we're talking about, you could say, listen. You know, this is what we've done as a city. Here's a couple of pods that may work for you, that we think we could go in and create a redevelopment area and get you the nineteen or twenty acres you need in order to make that work. And I, to me, that's the biggest thing. Cause time to these guys is money. And if it takes you eighteen months or two years to do entitlements, you just missed the bubble. And, and in today's market, as volatile as it is, I don't know what two years brings. I mean, it may all come back again to retail, you know, or it, it may not, you know? So that's the thing. And so when the opportunity's there, I go back to the Cabellos in Lehigh. You know, it was a tough deal for the owners of that to do what they did, but they did it. And it made all the difference in the world now to that whole market up there. And now it's created another, there'll be another, you know, million feet of retail by the time it's all done and three or four million feet of office and. But that, to me, that's the intent of redevelopment. Not just to go tear some buildings down and put a, it's, it's something that's gonna benefit the city for many years. Any, any questions?
Stuart, just one, one more maybe. Um, you know, we, we've looked at, if you look at what's happening in Sandy, um, you know, Hill Center Theater and that area. Um, well, they kinda had a mastermind behind that. The Stan Castle, when his group came in, kinda masterplanned that. What's your thought about, not sort of bringing in a developer, I don't know if it's a consultant or a planning group? Or what do you, what do you, what do you think about bringing in that kinda level of expertise? Particularly on, uh, something like East Bay for example or something. What's, what's your sense of how involving those kinds of folks in the process?
You know what? I, I mean, I, I used to not like them, but I'm getting to like them more and more. Um, from the aspect that I think it's, it, you know, we did one on, when we did the Gateway with Boyer, they came in and did one. And the same group did another one on another project. It was almost the same. You know, when they told me, when they told me at Gateway, we could do eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight square feet of restaurants, I was like, so we can't do ninety thousand? I mean, but today it's, today it's different. And I think a lot of cities, um, up in Farmington right now, Charcoil, what they're doing up there on two hundred acres. Um, they did one of these charades. We're doing a deal down in, uh, in St. George. The whole development's thirty-five hundred acres. There'll be three or four hundred acres over twenty years. It's commercial, which isn't retail, just retail. So they come in and do these charades and there's a couple of great companies out there that will give you ideas that sometimes we don't think about because they're coming from San Francisco or Pittsburgh. And they come in and put those things together and basically tell you what they think you can do within the market. Cost of those, you know, a hundred thousand bucks. But, but I think what they do is they give you some ideas in regards to how you do it. Um, and, and sometimes I don't think that's a bad thing, especially today, because we don't have a hundred acre to make a piece of dirt. You know, they can just go, it's gonna be redevelopment, so it's, you know, what's the highest interest use? So.
Isn't that what we did with retail strategies?
Yeah, again, the, the retail strategies thing was really more about trying to define the key niche markets where you can be successful. The leakage study, you know, so that we, again, overcame some of those, um, some of those hurdles that you face with the tenants. But I think in this case, if you think about what, what Sandy did, again, I'd love to have them come down and visit with you if you want to. But, um, you know, they, they went and hired this firm to look at the area around the South Town Mall. Basically from Ninetieth to Hundred and Sixth and from the freeway to Seventh Place, maybe, uh, was that kinda vision area. And, and they came back and said, uh, you know, again, your office is going well, let's do more office. Um, we think you ought to go steal Hill Center Theater from West Valley and bring it over to a, to a new great facility here where you could create a, uh, an entertainment anchor. And then they went out and identified potential new owners and eventually ended up negotiating the deal because it's now becoming Shops at South Town. And so again, there's, there were a whole lot of pieces to that puzzle. They ended up with Tracks Station right in the middle of it. And, you know, they did, they did a pretty remarkable job of kinda masterplanning that whole area. And again, now here you're talking hundreds and hundreds of acres, um, almost virtually all redevelopment, right? Some, some empty land, but, but a lot of take you down, small, smaller businesses bringing in bigger ones, doing a lot of relocation. Um, and so again, I don't know that we've got a project like that, uh, of that city scale and scope, but I'm really asking for a lot of the process. Um, so retail strategies was more global. I think what you're talking about here is something that's a lot more specific.
I remember them saying that they could help us get, bring in retail or if we wanted to pay extra, wanted to add on to that, that they could do that. But I don't think we had, um, we were interested or had the confidence in what they could bring.
I would look at one of these other firms. We dealt with Sand for three and a half years on the Sandy deal. I wish we could've pulled out what we had set out to do.
We didn't get it all.
We didn't get it all. But, but, but again, part of it is, is, it's the process. It's going through. And, and they got, you know, you see what they've got there now. And, um, and maybe down the road, the retail and all that'll catch up to it going down Main Street right there and the city office. And maybe that'll still take place and happen. Yeah, we worked on that for, missed that for a long time. But, but again, I go back to, if you're talking about it and looking at it, you know, sometimes it happens. You know, in, in our business, we all need luck. And, and every deal we do, there has to be some level of luck with you. But if it's not on the table and we're not talking about it and looking at it, then there's really no chance. So that's where I go back to. I think you look out ten, fifteen, twenty years and see what happens to the city. It's gonna keep getting encroached on. These things are built and the housing's built and it's like, where, where is our house gonna be? You know, that's gonna retain people or we just gonna let it go to Springville if they do something or, you know, so anyway.
We've got a couple of great comments. We'll hear from those guys here in a few minutes about, you know, kinda where the, where the private sector's going with that. You know, but, but again, I think the, I don't, I don't wanna take you thundered, but Stuart's given us a lot to talk about.
Yes, thank you very much. Really appreciate your time.
Well, I appreciate it. I, I'll leave a couple of cards and, and feel, hey, feel free to call. We do this. Man, I don't work in the cities. I'd probably work with twelve or thirteen or fifteen. Again, we realize that's, you're the future. Um, nothing's gonna happen. Mark and some of these guys are gonna test without you guys helping them out. The process is how do we, how do we look faster, quicker, you know, that we can take advantage where opportunities are there, so. Anyway, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to the next segment here, which is gonna be a roundtable discussion with short presentations, uh, initially to start with from Provo Town Center, Riverwoods, Downtown Provo Inc. and the mix. And we'll invite their representatives to join us for a little bit.
And there's, there's two other gentlemen here. They're gonna follow these four.
Okay.
Doug Munson and Dejon Eskic are from MHT. They're gonna do a short presentation and discussion on West Provo market strategy, findings on data, that kinda stuff.
Excellent.
Who are, who are they with?
MHT, what's the second?
MTN.
MTN. Oh, I had it wrong. Sorry, MTN.
All right, so, uh, to start things off with that, we give each of you maybe five minutes or so to kinda introduce your, uh, your business and kinda what, how you fit in this overall picture of the economic development in Provo. And then we'll get a discussion going from there. So since you're the host today, Mr. Bowles, can we start with you?
I'm Scott Bowles. I'm the general manager of the Provo Town Center Mall. Provo Town Center Mall is, I probably argue one of the largest fiscal assets in Provo. Almost a million square feet of space. Um, we've been here for almost twenty years. Well, have twenty years of operation, uh, summer of next year. Uh, the mall was recently, recently purchased about a year and a half ago by Briston Capital, private equity group out of San Diego, California. They're not like typical ownership. They're very involved. And I know that JJ has very similar ownership. Uh, where they're very entrepreneurial and they love things a very different way as opposed to most types of ownership when it comes to shopping centers. Uh, I think the important thing to say about Provo Town Center is it's one of Utah's very few enclosed regional shopping centers. And you have a very different mix of people up here. We all operate very different things or look over very different aspects of the economy, especially when it comes to retail. So we can't really be treated the same. We have some very same needs, but how we address those are very different because of what we operate. So I know we've talked a lot about consumerism, but I'm hoping with this roundtable discussion, we can start talking about retailing. They're two totally different things. As we talk about day-to-day operations and retail mixing and looking forward into the future. Uh, the last thing I will say is that we're happy that we're starting a redevelopment process here. It's gonna take about two to three years, maybe more, hopefully not more, uh, around eighty million dollars. And that's already started with the construction of a hotel, which will also have out parcel development. With most constructions start early, uh, two thousand and eighteen.
Uh, JJ Herring. I'm with the Shops at Riverwoods in that little north Provo area up the, up the street from here. Um, anyways, uh, as you, as a lot of you know, in two thousand and nine, the shopping center was purchased by One Enterprises, which is a local, uh, private equity firm, family private equity firm here. Um, and at the time, they went, went under a, a refacing. Um, at the time, a lot of tenants were very nervous about that. A lot of community members were nervous about that. Um, and we've just seen in, in recent years, kinda the fruits of the, the labors there. And the idea come to life and, you know, retailers and tenants get excited about having that be a walking center. And we feel like, uh, Stuart was talking about today, um, you know, being an entertainment component and being able to. you know, kind of change the mold of what shopping centers are doing. We thought we were, we feel like we were a little ahead of the curve there that way. And so it's been a successful project. When we purchased the project in two thousand nine, there was about forty-ish percent occupancy in the shopping center. And maybe half of those people were paying rent at the time. And so it was very dismal at best, or abysmal, whatever you call it. And, and now we're at about ninety-nine percent occupancy at the moment and, you know, the center's thriving. So we feel like things are going well, but there's, you know, much more work to be done. So that's, that's Shops at Riverwoods.
Good morning. My name is Mark Isaac. I'm the owner's representative for Westport Capital Partners. A little bit of background for me, I have an interesting take on a lot of this activity in the public and private partnership because I was a city planner originally, became an economic development analyst. And then my father bought a four hundred acre project called the Jordan Landing in West Jordan. And at the time, it was a conflict of interest when I was economic development analyst for the city and my father was doing the largest project in the city. So I went to the dark side in nineteen ninety-eight, as all my planner friends say. And so I have a unique bent because I've been on both sides of the counter. And I understand the delivery side. I will never know retail like Stuart and his partner Tim, but I've traveled the country opening retail with Stuart and Tim from Billings, Montana to Post Falls, Idaho, to Nashville, Tennessee to, so we have a lot of experience doing so. What struck me in the early part of the dialogue today with Stuart was every one of the communities that you referred to as successful, as vibrant, as energetic, as I'm sitting back there, I'm going, Mayor Dolan's leadership in Sandy City, the fastest entitlement process in the state of Utah, the most aggressive incentive city in the state of Utah, Draper, now the most aggressive city in the state of Utah, incentives. And I'm starting to go, wow, Orem, really fast entitlement process, aggressive with incentives. It truly is a public to private partnership. And the cities, their leadership in the past have sat back and said, we're not gonna help them. They're on their own. They're the ones with the capital. They're the ones with the cash. They're the ones with the knowledge and are willing to take the risk. Are the cities that have been slowest to grow, slowest to kindle the fire. And the Wasatch Front is a perfect example of it. Every single one of them that have the shields and have the downtown core and have the unique. And now West Valley has tacked the boat and they're moving as quickly as they can, as aggressively as they can because as quickly as the city has these tools, the state looks to shut them off. It's a fascinating dynamic. There's always a part of our state legislature that's looking to take away your tools to incentivize your community. So I'm, I'm excited to be involved in this because I'm so passionate about it. It's been my career. But I'm watching the mix right now. We bought seventy million dollars of real estate in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen in Utah. We have six projects along the Wasatch Front from here all the way to West Haven. Three of them are under construction and we started Provo's first. That's, that's a striking premise. We are gonna spend a hundred and forty million dollars in your community and twenty-one months later, I can't tell nine retailers when I can open them. I've got nine letters of intent out of thirteen spaces. We're almost full. And I don't have one signed lease because I can't tell them when I can start and when I can open.
What's the holdup?
Entitlement, planning, government service.
What do you mean entitlement?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. The planning process, we submitted our application to start the process in February two thousand sixteen to your city. I submitted an application in Salt Lake City in February this year for a hundred and fifty million dollar project in Sugar House on the ShopCo site. We're under construction. I've got a hole that's forty feet deep and I'm about to start the University of Utah Hospital complex on there on September fifteenth. And I submitted that thirteen months after I submitted the approval process starting Provo. Those are the kinds of things that you guys as leadership can make a difference in and your city will, will immediately benefit from it because the real estate, the environment and the enthusiasm for your community is huge. I represent an equity fund out of New York and LA and I've been approached by Denapoli, Angelo Gordon, the Whip Watt folks out of Las. There's more money looking to come into Utah than I can ever remember and it's because of what you have here. And the cities that are aggressive and strike when they're there are the ones that get their attention and man, they go like a wildfire. And it's exciting. We have a beautiful piece of real estate in your city. We're on the Provo River. We overlook the Riverside Country Club and we're between two of the, well, the fastest growing universities in the state of Utah. And there's seventy thousand students within three miles of our project. We know it's gonna be great. I can't tell anybody when we can start because I'm not finished the government service yet. Those are the kinds of things that as leadership here, you guys make a bit of a difference with. And boy, will your city take off like a rocket. I promise you that because everybody wants to be here.
That's pretty sobering, thank you.
That's what campaigners are hearing out there in the city. That's exactly what I'm hearing as a mayor candidate, that the city is not responding.
We wanna spend a hundred and forty million dollars in your community over the next thirty-six months. That's what we're here to do. And we believe in it. We believe in you guys. And these are little things and I'm, I'm, I don't want this to be negative. It's the exact opposite. But this is an opportunity where your leadership right there can truly make a difference. And I think it's really important that we all think that way. This isn't, I'm not allowing you to be negative. It's the exact opposite. I want you guys to know how effective you can be. It's, it's, it's brilliant.
And if I could just add to that, I don't think it's because any of you are the one who are making it hard. I think there's just a lot of internal communication that needs to be improved so that this can all be expedited.
I'm Quinn Peterson, Downtown Provo Inc. I began, I have a little e-commerce company, a little men's clothing line. We ship all over the world, but nothing in Utah because they're too cheap. But we started selling in a shop up in Sugar House. And then the owner wanted to open a store in Provo, so he asked me to run it. I ran that store for four years. And that process had a lot of experience with the downtown environment and business success and failures in the downtown area. And so we now do what we can through Downtown Provo Inc. to help facilitate success in the downtown area as a whole. We step in to hopefully create more of an energy and collaborative environment outside of the front door for these retailers in the downtown area that make the whole space more successful.
Thank you. So the purpose of the discussion today is to discuss what can be done to improve and further economic development and some of the things you've already mentioned here, how we can improve the process. So let's just kind of open it up, both to members of the panel, if you have additional things you'd like to share, members of the council, if you have questions. Just want this to be an open, wide-ranging discussion.
Let's talk a little bit about the retail setting. I mean, we're all knowledgeable in that and how we can help. Retail, we'll never understand retail like Stuart and his team in that vein, but it's becoming experiential. It's becoming an opportunity to continue to socialize. Human nature is, is, human contact, as odd as it sounds when everyone's staring at a screen right now. I still think that there's an opportunity for human beings to like to be around others. The theater, Jordan Landing's theater had one point two million people go through its front door last year. Just on a three sixty-five, that's thirty-two hundred people a day went to that theater. Well, every single one of them had to drive through the community to get there. So then they're hitting all of Stuart's quick-serve restaurants and all of Scott's and every one of us benefit from that vehicular interaction and the windshield visibility of your community. So number one, your retail provides an opportunity for you guys to generate energy in your community. And it's changing. The weird part for us and the delivery side, Target's been sniffing around your community and I think you all know that. And we worked really hard to get Target on the mix. Target used to have a hundred and fifty-five people in its real estate department. It now has sixteen. So when those two guys come to Provo, if I can move like that while they're there, while they're thinking about it and tell them when I can open and go back to the city and say, here's, I got an idea, you have their attention. But when they leave and twenty or twenty-two months later, they still haven't made a decision and all of a sudden Stuart's got a new site for them. And then they're off into Harriman or they're off, they might not come back to Provo for two years. That's the things that we need to be thinking about as a team is when they're here, strike like lightning. Don't let them leave. You know, it's, it's sort of that old sales thing. If you're trying to sell a home, when you're walking them through the home, don't let them walk out the door and look at another home. And that's, and that's important for all of us. So the retail capacity to make decisions has diminished. Home Depot laid off a hundred and twenty-five people in their real estate department. Home Depot has what, ten now, Stuart?
I think it's less than that.
I think it's less than that for the United States. So when that lady comes to look at Utah, she comes into town, she's here for forty-eight hours, she's gonna look at thirteen cities. And what's she gonna decide? And so the ability to strike, the ability to make a decision or the ability to risk making a decision and kind of sit back, land the hook.
I'm gonna add something to that real quick too, just kind of to reiterate, kind of condense it down. There's, there's four words that all of us know, especially with Quinn as a, as a retailer. And I, and Quinn's not gonna talk that up, but his experience as a retailer is huge. We are operators, right? Mark has got a wide spectrum of experience where he's been a planner. He's also been a developer. He's been an operator. JJ and I are operators. But every day, these four words rule our lives. It's time kills all deals, kills everything. And when Mark says, you have a window of time, he is absolutely right. Because when he's, when you talk about the real estate site selection process, that is a very difficult, stressful time because I know there's been lots of shows that make fun of it because it, it seems a little obtuse. And if we look at it goes, wow, how could someone come into a community in forty-eight hours and look at thirteen sites in all these different cities and know everything? They don't know everything. It's actually quite amazing what site selectors actually know and what they don't know. But what they do know is, is the money right? Do the demographics match? If those two things match, great. Can we pencil the deal? We can? Good. Which one pencils better? So if we're not ready and the time's not on our side, we lose the deal. And on the second hand of that, and it goes intertwined very well, it's no more sacred cows. You can't afford them. Retailers don't care about your sacred cows. They don't care about anything that's going on in your community that's like, well, you know, why do you do these things this way? Well, we've always done them that way. That's not gonna be an acceptable excuse to a retailer. Because all they're gonna look at is the time and they're gonna look at the money. If they say, we can make a deal work, do you want it to work? And for them, it's not because they're trying to force you or strong-arm you to a decision. They're there to make money. They're there to offer a service, which in turn, if the service does well, it feeds back into your community in terms of products, goods, services, quality of life, et cetera, et cetera. So for us, the people we work for, time is everything. That old saying, time is money, it absolutely is, but time also kills all deals. And I gotta hand it to Mark and his team because when I was with the city, I worked closely with his team. They're being infinitely patient with that process. I, I, I don't know if I could ever hold on to nine L O Is for that long. And that, and that speaks a lot.
Scott, what are Provo's sacred cows?
I, I have my personal opinion. I, I will tell you, so I'll tell you for this. So if I were to speak on behalf of the mall, which I, I am comfortable doing, and we have to look at it and we say, okay, what supports a regional mall? We have to be comfortable with signage. We have to be comfortable with building height. We have to be comfortable with multifamily housing. We have to be comfortable with growth. I, I will tell you that when we talk to retailers and they see story after story after story after story saying, well, we have to preserve agriculture. People scratch their heads and go, why is a city trying to preserve the lowest paying jobs in your community and the fastest decreasing job market in the state of Utah? What as an operator do you tell those people? Right? And, and that's, that's a difficult thing because they'll see and say, it doesn't make sense, right? And we can sit here and we can argue the semantics, right, which are, are there benefits to agriculture? Absolutely. Are there benefits to quality of life? Absolutely. Is it the highest and best use for land in Provo? That's where we start to get to the gray area, right? That's where we start.
So you mentioned, I think four of the five we did, we've done for you, signage, mixed use, as far as changing the zone. And we've done it, I think, in the first meeting. And so what I would like to know as far as the council goes, what, and I think for the, for the mix too, and you wanted that, the mixed use. We, we approved it in the first meeting, if I remember right. I think we approved that, that mixed zone use. And so I'm kind of wondering if you can drill down for us on where exactly is the, the hangup? And is it in design review? Is it in engineering? Is it in, the, the meetings take too long to get, to come, you know, to the council or it's too much time to come to the council or to come to the planning commission? If you can drill down on some of those things, that would really help us understand where are the hangups? Why is it taking so long in Provo? Where exactly is that happening? So that you can, we can actually kind of laser focus on the areas that need improvement. Because I, I guess from my perspective, I'm thinking when they come to the council and ask for something, we have every single time, I think we pass it. I can't think of any time we've actually...
I can think of, we haven't.
What, what ones have we not?
Okay, I'm gonna talk about peg development over at the Riverwoods Mall. They came in four times to our city council.
But that's not the, that's not the actual mall.
But it has such implications to the mall.
Okay, but I'm just talking about your specific developments. And what I would like to have you do is drill down into what happened with your experiences where you felt like the city was just, you know, painstakingly slow or whatever, is what I'm getting. Is that the other places are just, they're streamlined, they're boom, boom, boom. Where are we lacking? Is it at the council level? Is it at the more of the, you know, engineering, planning, those kinds of levels? And, and if you're not prepared to like drill down on all that today, if you could even just put it in writing so that we can actually fix some of those things?
I can address that real succinct and real quick.
Okay.
We had a unanimous approval for a text change.
You got a mic there.
From the city council in November. Unanimous approval from the planning commission in December. Our drawings are done, so we go out to bid because we're gonna start construction in February of this year and deliver retailers in November of this year. We're, it was the, we're like, sweet. Unanimous, unanimous, done. We've been bogged down in staff since the city council approved the text change and the planning commission unanimously approved our project plan. We still can't pull the building permit or record the plat. And so we went to bid and some city council members called me and said, holy mackerel, what happened? You just pulled your bid and stopped the project. And I said, we didn't. We were ready to start and break ground in February. The interesting thing in Utah is we have seasonality, right? I can't do three and a half acres of decorative concrete and plazas in cold weather conditions. One yard of concrete has thirty-five dollars of additives for it to set properly in cold weather conditions. And to broom sweep, to finish, to strike, it's, it's difficult. So word timing, seasonality. And then as Stuart and his team can attest, the timing of opening a retailer is everything. They only open once or twice a year. They might open in the spring, March, April, May-ish, and they'll open in the fall. That's it. They're not gonna open in vacation season in the summer and they're sure in the heck not gonna open in the holiday season and in the dead of winter. Going into January, February. So, so timing really matters. And so we literally had to pull the bids, stop Big D and all of our bidding and pricing and we were getting ready to break ground. Now, for that alone, we were gonna have nine retailers open in Provo City in two thousand seventeen. None of them will open until fall, two thousand eighteen. We did a buyout of the mix. There's no retailers there. You guys are generating zero sales tax revenue from that shopping center. And the staff has cost an entire year of income to your community. That's a lot. What's the answer, Wayne?
Well, it was two sides of a story.
I know, I'm aware of the other side. I know, I'm on the other side.
And certainly true. There are standards beyond what the council approves in the text amount. And difficulty has been trying to define what those are. For example, questions about what streets are public, and if they're public, what do they look like? Do we have to modify our engineering standards to accommodate what a developer wants to do frequently? We were asked to do that. And that does take time, because it's a departure from the normal standard. And if we have responsibility for that street, we wanna make sure we can operate and maintain it, we get to the utilities. So there are lots of wrinkles and implications to that, and Mark and I have talked before, we've had Mark in lots of meetings, trying to resolve these issues, and you know, we certainly could do better. But a lot of it has to do with the technical, once we get the plans and can evaluate them, and see how they stack up to our standards, then we have to figure out how to either make them work, or what's a reasonable deviation.
Now, in defense of Wayne, to communicate with you in just open dialogue, the difficulty we've run into, and I think the three of us especially, I'm not as familiar with Quinn's activities, we're into a process of repositioning existing assets. And the city hasn't gone through that yet. Provo City's never gone through that. So it's a learning curve on the staff side, the entitlement side, code, text, ordinance, zoning. And the three of us are kind of taking the bumps and bruises, and I think that the city's going to be in a better position for it moving forward, Kim, frankly, because of all of it. And so, there's absolutely truth in that. If I came in and followed your text, your zone, and your code on raw ground, and Stuart and I were working on the project in East Bay, or maybe out on the west side, and it was raw land, Wayne and his team would have had us approved six or nine months ago, and I'm absolutely certain of it, because that mechanism was in place. So, the positive for the city is, is people are now here looking to redevelop, re-engage, reinvest, and make what they have already in your community better. And the coolest part about that for the city is, it's because your infrastructure is already established in place and will support it. So, I don't... My point is, is I wanted to be brutally honest, to help you guys get better, but there's a risk of sounding negative, and that wasn't my intention at all. We will be better for this, all of us. We're in a position now where we're gonna go like hell, and in the spring, that place will be a very, very active site, so we're there. But I want you guys to know how some of these other cities are lapping you. And it's because of the pace of how quickly they move. Stuart talked about retail globally, and, but everything went back to pace, went back to timing, went back to delivery. So, where Wayne and I and his staff have had challenges, and I know that you do have with the staff, we're working through those dynamics, and Provo's gonna be in a real good place. There's great leadership, there's great staff here. It's just taken way too damn long. But it won't the second time.
I'd like to mention something too, the council is actually very interested in this issue of how long it takes and how difficult it is to get through the process. We formed a development approval process review committee about a year and a half ago, I think. And we've invited a number of developers to come in, share their stories, where they had problems and that, and we're... We've identified several things that we're working on right now, that we think will really make a big difference in improving that. And the administration has been great to work with on this, it's been a joint effort really, between the council and the administration. Just in our very last meeting, we approved a relatively simple change that will shave two to four weeks off the amount of time it takes to get from planning commission through to a council decision. And there's several bigger things that we're still in the process of working on, so we really appreciate this feedback, and we are trying to improve this process.
You were right, and the interesting thing, I'm working on a project in Sugar House, and we met with the Sugar House Community Council and the City Council, and they were talking about the difficulty of the congestion. And I said, "Yeah, that's a traffic perspective", "That's a resident perspective", but when any one of us travel to a cool place, it's vibrant, it's congested, it has energy. Big parking fields in the big retail shopping center, parking fields of old, do not provide any congestion, vibrancy, energy, cool factor. So, we were getting ground down in the concerns of connectivity and circulation, because from a city's perspective holistically, that's a problem. From a retailer's perspective, it's brilliance. If the traffic's slow, they have more time to take in what the Riverwoods has, to take in what Quinn's got on the street, to take in what Scott's trying to do. So there's been a big shift. Congestion is vibrancy in retailing. And the slowdown and the kind of dense nature. I'm an owner in the Jordan Landing with my family. What people forget is the first thing I did, and Stuart and Tim were our team when we originally did that project 20 years ago, the first thing we did was put 860 multifamily units on the Jordan Landing. We entitled multifamily and density there before we put the first retailer there. It's 125 acres of retail, it's 1.2 million square feet. It's been a success story because it's a mixed use. Fred Bruning and John Paul Wardy and the boys that are doing all the Center Cow stuff, and the Farmington Station Park, all of a sudden, they're not building a shopping center in America, and they're big players without office, without multifamily, without a mix of uses, because it helps your day use, it helps your morning, it helps your... And that's the brilliance of where Provo's heading. But it took a little while, because it was the first time you guys looked into it. So, yeah, we're the bears of bad news of how slow it's been, but we're also the tip of the spear in helping the community change. And so, there's a lot more good than bad.
I wanted to say a couple things, just because I think I'm in a different area, because I'm not developing new stuff right now, but from a timing perspective, some of the things that we get caught up on, you know, is like you asked for specifics, is the permitting process is a big one for us. I have an example of, we had an office tenant that was coming in. They were going to go to Lehigh, and then they decided, "No, we wanna stay in the Provo area", then they were gonna go up to the mall and do the new office building of the university place. And then they decided that they, no, they wanted to stay at their roots, they wanted to stay in Provo. They wanted to start building, and it took nine weeks to get their permit done, and they were told it was gonna take two to three. So, it was, so that was something, you know, this is a person that wants to stay here in this community, wants to add to it, and it takes nine weeks to get through a permitting process, and that's... So that's just another example of timing in a different sphere, and so I think a lot of these areas can just be improved with making people realize that I think sometimes people look at developers like Mark and like Scott and things that we're doing, and they look at us that, "Oh", they're just trying to push their agenda to make more money, and stuff that way. No, we're trying to build a community and build a shopping center and to build these mixed-use centers that help the community as a whole, and that's the focus, I think, for a lot of us. And we just want help in doing that, and I think to segue that into something else that I think that is important, go ahead.
Before you segue, was that the person building that office building, was that a neighbor of yours, or was that actually on your property?
It's on the property. So they actually took the old Borders building location, which was 24,000 square feet of retail that's been sitting vacant for six years, and, you know, we felt great to have someone go in that space and fill that space, and and then it took another nine weeks on top of that.
What's going in there?
It's an office. Ion Solar actually went in there.
So they were just looking for a building permit in order to change?
Yeah, a remodeling permit. They did nothing structurally, and it still took nine weeks. So... And then on that same project, to make parking a little bit better, this is a funny one, I'm just gonna... Riverwoods, if you've been down to Riverwoods, you know, there's a fair amount of trees and things down at Riverwoods, and we feel like we have a lot of green space and stuff that way. Something got stuck in community development for probably like four weeks, because we wanted to take one tree out of the parking lot, and they said they wouldn't approve their portion of permit until we added four more trees in to make up for that one tree. And so that was a four-week process, and I'm like, "Riverwoods has a lot of trees".
Wayne, that's for the shop, that kind of stuff can happen.
That's first by river.
Yeah, so anyways, you know, it's just something, just a couple examples and things that way. But I think the other thing too, that I think is important is just to have a relationship, I think we can have a relationship with the city council. A lot of you are meeting for the first time today, and I've worked on the Riverwoods project for six years. And so I think that that's important, to have that communication amongst council members, amongst community development, and to be able to work together, like Stuart's been saying, and Mark's been saying, that that's important in a city to work together, and I think that you know, everyone having an opportunity to kind of get together, this is great in a big meeting setting like this, but I think coming down and having separate, you know, sits down, I love to walk you through the Riverwoods and show you everything that's going on, because I think you know, sometimes that's important to, you know, know what's going on and be able to work together, so you can hear some of these stories, so that we can fix them.
What kind of help will the apartments across the road be of for you? Would that be a positive?
It will be huge. You know, like Mark was just saying, that's what everyone does nowadays, because you wanna create that critical mass. So retailers want movie theaters, they want apartments, they want office around them, because that's what everyone comes to a shopping mall on Friday and Saturday night. But who comes on Wednesday afternoon? And who comes on Thursday morning? You know, and that's where you create that, with creating more office and creating apartments around it, so to have 230, I think the final group was somewhere around 230 apartments, to have that around the shopping center will be huge. As we've talked to national retailers and other people, and told them about that project, it changes the whole dynamic of the conversation with some of those tenants, because they're like, "Oh, wait a second, now you have this 230 apartments coming in to add critical mass to the shopping center", it changes the whole dynamic, so we're ecstatic about it.
And you can see that change which is happening downtown. As we go to these units downtown, the life that you see even at night or midday downtown has been drastically different since we've been putting all these residential spaces down there. If I could also share an experience with the retail in Provo, it is that the Provo residents are starving for more of this unique culture.
Some, Quinn, some are not, some don't want it to change. They want it to stay the same, and that's what we're fighting, that's what we fought at the Riverwoods.
Yeah. The thing is though, well, here's the example. The example is unhinged, unhinged, which is up in Sugar House, the one I said I worked with. They're up in Sugar House, that was their first location, they did really well, and it was a lot of arm-bending to get them, or someone like them, to take this unique boutique coming down to Provo. Because Provo is this cheap market. Why would we go there? It's a weird little bubble community. And over the past four years, we have far surpassed the Sugar House performance. And the Provo store does 40% better all day long, all year round now, than the Sugar House store. And whenever anybody walks into that store, they go, "Why, where am I? I've lived in Provo for 40 years, and I've never seen this, when did you open?" "Oh, we've been here for four and a half years now", "When's the last time you were downtown?" And they just never come. But when they come down and they see a shop like that, and they go, "Wow, this is awesome", and they just want more of it. And so, we need to do what we can to pave the way for more of that to be in Provo, and to share these statistics with those naysayers to say, "Hey, look, it's not as backwards as you think", and we will succeed there.
Does the barber shop? Do you think that kind of took over the industry?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so when I took over that store, there was no barber shop. And I said, "We need to have a third party in here that can cross-pollinate", and this really comes down to, you know, I know that several of us were squirming during this last conversation, because we had things we wanted to say. And my biggest issue with the conversation that's happened so far is we need to more seriously address the problem of the internet. And the internet, and what it's shutting down, because big box like Target, I don't know. I'm not as experienced as you guys, but I say, "Who cares", you can buy Target's crap online. You know, and it's just gonna go more and more that way over the next few years. That's not the future of retail. The future of retail are things like a barber shop, you can't get a haircut online, and you never will be able to do that. And so, if you can put a barber shop into your retail space, we had one guy, and he had like four regular haircuts. And within weeks, he was booked out for months, so he hired a second guy. He hired a third guy. So just this week, he hired his fifth barber in that shop, and they're all booked out for two months. And because of that, when we have people coming in every hour, five people an hour to get a haircut, in January, when we have no retail sales, those people come in to get haircuts, and then they buy retail for months. So I think that it's creating these unique collaborative spaces that really are gonna help us bridge that gap with the internet. And Target's not that solution.
I disagree with you, because I have too many people that want to shop at Target still.
Okay. You're right, you know, and I think maybe it's more of getting ahead of that curve, five years from now. But I think that we need to look at that, instead of looking what used to be successful, we need to be more creative with thinking of what's going to be successful, because the internet's here and it's not going anywhere.
You know, but everyone's panicking about the retail and the confluence of this internet. It's not complete doom and gloom. It's forcing retailers
To be more creative.
To reinvent themselves a bit. It used to be, "Build it and they will come", and everybody was successful, and the internet is exposing us to knowledge, awareness, enthusiasm for more things, different things, unique things. And the retailing will catch up with it. Cabela's is a big story on retailing, on a per-square-foot basis, and a destination, and a generator of energy. They're the largest catalog company in the world. Before the internet, they were the largest, they did more phone and catalog sales than any company in the world, and yet their brick and mortar is now 50 or 60 stores in America in massive destinations. That is a perfect example of making their program work, both through the opportunity of sales and shipping, and through the store experience. So, there's opportunities out there for the retailers to exceed, we don't have to be doom and gloom. Stuart and I aren't looking for a new career, because retail is in the tank. They're changing their ways, and we're working that way. So the creative ways that cities are willing to look at things. I have a really good example of West Jordan, when I was the economic development analyst, I was a guy from Canada, and they said, "Mark, you're not an LDS guy, you're rewriting liquor laws", because none of us wanna touch it. And so I went up and presented this new liquor ordinance to the city council in West Jordan in 1996 or 97. One of the councilmen said, "We don't want that in our city", and I said, "But here's what Chili's is gonna say to you. They're gonna make burger and fries, and they got a fry cook, and fries and they got a fry cook, they got a grill guy, they got buns, cheese, tomatoes, lettuce and spoilage. And they're gonna make two dollars off that cheeseburger and fries and employ four people. They're gonna lay one beer bottle on it, side it in the fridge, sell it for two fifty, it costs them fifty-five cents, and they're gonna double the revenue off that burger and fry sale at lunch hour. And that guy that had a beer with his burger left Chili's, isn't a detriment to your community. It's what some cultures do. And the LDS faith travels the world and every culture in the world and sits down at someone's house in Italy and they're drinking wine and they won't partake, but it doesn't make them bad people. Well, the West Jordan guys were like, you know, and so we fought for a couple of months on this liquor ordinance. As soon as they changed their liquor ordinance, West Jordan got thirty restaurants on the Jordan landing. About thirteen of them sell liquor. And they don't have a problem with the retail. And it was just the idea. So it's just letting you know that if you're creative to help these guys that are creative and willing to adapt a little bit, you're not putting your community at risk. You're not putting your constituents at risk. What you're doing is you're adapting to the times. And boy, does it ever make a difference for retailer's success if you're unique with your signage, if you're unique with your storefronts, if you allow creativity on a storefront instead of non-reflective glass and, you know, sixty percent, you know, there's all this criteria that's old school. And we all know the old school because it's been done for about thirty straight years or forty years. And everybody's changing and the slow part of change is the code, the text in the ordinance that accommodates. When you were talking about the barber, there's a great barber shop up in Sugar House that was trying to have draft beer and draft root beer for people while they were waiting. And it became a border health and a food panelers permitted. It was all these challenges and all they were trying to do is just create an experiential time for someone to go get their haircut. Those are the kinds of things that you guys in leadership and Wayne's staff and Dixon's team and David Walters, you guys have so many good people in this community, just be receptive to it, willing to adapt at whatever level you think is necessary. I'm telling you, Provo to change, I'm just telling you that the cities that are rocking right now are the ones that have been willing to say, what if, what if, and they're all working on incentives. We did ten million dollars of incentives on the Jordan landing. They got four hundred eight acres of development in their city. It was all post-performance, so we paid for all of that. And the Jordan landing is forty-five percent of the city of West Jordan's sales tax revenue. And it paid for itself in four years. And there's a lot of cities on the off edge front that aren't willing to be creative. Provo needs to be creative now and, and they'll knock it out of the park.
Appreciate, appreciate everything that's been said, um-
But-
-as Quinn said, you know, there's been times where I've been squirming a little bit, but I've really tried to, you know, just to listen. So I'll throw out a, a couple of thoughts. Um, I guess I'm more addressing my, my fellow council members than, than anything. Um, I do think, you know, we, we, we put this forum together and it has a fairly specific point of view. I appreciate, uh, Quinn being here. Uh, I think he has a, a little different point of view. I, I think we, we have been kind of skewed a little bit towards large businesses, large projects. I think he represents a little bit more of a, of kind of a small business take. And, and I think, I, I, the point is, is there are other perspectives that, that I think we should consider, but I really appreciate, um, what's, what's been shared so we can understand this perspective. Um, I, I have to say something about, I, I think, I think there is a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a sum zero game when we talk about overall retail in the region. And so when you talk about the, the cities that are, uh, you know, fast entitlement, best incentives, they're the ones getting the projects. And that's, that's true. Um, but at a cost to, to the others in, in the area. We talked about, uh, the Gale Center Theater being stolen from West Valley. Well, you know, in, in some ways it is, is a sum zero and, and so it's, in a, in a way it's a race to the bottom. Um, and I think we need to, from a city point of view, if you're not gonna play the game and others are willing to play it, they're the ones that are gonna get all of the, all of that. And, but I think if we look more holistically, I think we need to provide ways to, or look at ways to provide value without necessarily just undercutting everyone else. Um, I think the region, the, the, you know, maybe, the region as a whole will do better if we will look for ways to be cooperative rather than competitive. Um, and, and, but provide real value and, and real opportunities, um, to, to retailers. Um, we said earlier, you know, people want to be here because of what we have. Um, and I think at least the, the other, another perspective, you know, from the, from the council and, and people that have elected us to, to make these decisions, we have to consider what we have, why we have it, and what can we do, what, what needs to be done in order to protect it. We, we may have created this great, what we have is very attractive, but it's attractive to everyone or to a lot of people, not necessarily only those that are going to help enhance what we have. And so we have to protect against someone that's gonna come in and will, will benefit off of what we've, what we've created but won't add to that. And so, so that's, that is a perspective that, that's something that we have to consider. Is this, is this squandering what we have? Is this ruining what we have? Um, you know, obviously we can't just stay still. We need to continue to, to move forward, but we have to be smart about how we move forward. And I appreciated the, the comments about, um, vision and, and creating a vision and articulating that vision and, and, and working with, with those to, to bring it about. I, I, I fully agree with that. Um, with the reviews, um, and the time that it takes, I think with, with me on the Development Approval Process Review Committee, what we're looking for is making sure that any time, and, you know, any part of that review that it's value added, that we're not wasting time and we're, you know, that we're, that if, if, if there's a review that's necessary, if there's a request that's necessary, that, you know, that it is necessary, that, that, and we're getting, that the community's getting something out of it or the retailer is getting it, or the applicant is getting something out of it, that we're not just wasting time. I, I do think that that's, that's, we've talked about a lot of areas where we can approve on that, we'll, we'll continue to improve on that. Last thing is we've talked about standards and X amount of glass, non-reflective and, and all of that. I, I agree that, um, you know, we, we can't, we can't let those become stagnant. We need to be receptive of, of where things are going and what's the market and, and all of that. But I also am concerned a little bit about the idea that, you know, not that you said it, but that the idea that we shouldn't have, shouldn't have standards or we should do whatever, whatever the developer wants. This has been thrown around a lot, you know, and I'm sure there's lots of reasons for it, but, um, we sometimes talk about Center Street Provo is a certain way, has a certain feel. Um, and in part it's because, because of some of those standards versus Orem State Street has been a lot looser and just kind of, hey, whatever someone wants to do, kind of go for it. At least that's the perception. I don't know how true that is. But, um, I think we would like to have, I, I think, I wouldn't trade our Center Street Provo for what Orem has on, on State Street. Um, even if State Street brings in more, more sales tax. And so, so anyways, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the presentations, learning a lot, want to continue this and, and agree, but, um, you're just kind of putting out a, another perspective as well.
And it's like the SimCity game.
Okay.
You know, it's growing quickly and, but you don't have any sales tax revenue, so you don't have a big enough police force, you don't have a big enough fire service and it starts to affect the quality of life. Then all of a sudden crime rates go up and part of your city catches on fire. For any of you that played SimCity, it's kind of a funny balance because, and that's the truth of the matter, is you're the leadership that's trying to balance the act. The dialogue today and the invitation to Stuart and his team is how does Provo become more effective and a little bit better mousetrap in attracting some retail, generating some sales tax revenue, it increases your budget where you can have a very positive effect on maintaining those things that matter most to Provo City. And so it's a balance. And my point to you is when the investors come and the retailers come and the visitors come to the city, say yes, respond quickly, land the hook. You have time to step back and take a breath, but if the first thing out of your mouth is I don't think so, I'm not sure, probably not, they're just gonna go right over the top and move on by. So, so the angle for us is you guys have the opportunity to be that balancing act for your quality of life. Provo shouldn't try to emulate any other city. But when you ask why Orem's kicking your butts, there's a reason why. The Woodbury Group's got two hundred million dollars of incentive package up on University Mall and this big nucleus and I'm trying to build something one point eight miles away. I'm not competing with any of that. And you guys shouldn't expect me to. I'm looking for experiential retail and a cool factor and a hipness that every, and the reason we called it the Mix is we thought, let's meet at the Mix. If you live in Orem, you're gonna meet at the Mix. And if you're at UVU, you're gonna meet at the Mix. And if you're at BYU, it's a one minute bike ride or five minute walk. Or if you're in downtown Provo, you could go on the BRT out to the Mix and we're gonna meet there because I live there, we're gonna meet there because I work there. We're gonna meet there because we want to eat there. We're gonna meet there because there's entertainment there. That's where we're heading. That's where all the retail's heading is it has to be a twenty-four hour cycle where people are living, working, recreating, eating, dining, shopping. It used to be just shopping. And shopping doesn't work anymore. Those guys are getting their butts kicked. If it's experiential and they go to the barber shop and all of a sudden there's something else and they go to the Riverwoods and they are employed, hey honey, on your way home, stop and get this. Yeah.
And honestly, I think that's why Target does work. Because they've changed, when they put groceries in, that was their, um-
I know, I really do like barber shops.
-haircutting parlor, right? That was their barber shop. I mean, because everyone has to eat. And then they have a little restaurants out front. They'll have McDonald's or, or Taco Bell or whatever it is. I mean, they're kind of, they're reinventing themselves too. I think that's why those do work. Because they do, you go there, you have to have groceries, but oh, there's some soft goods that I need too and I can do it all in one stop. And so, yeah, I mean, we're not bashing Target. I, I, I go there.
There's an entrepreneurial spirit, spirit came in Provo-
Yeah.
-and BYU and UVU and they, they come back from these missions and they've experienced the world. And there's sixty-five thousand of them out there right now on every single given day. And the entrepreneurial spirit that's in Utah County has captured the attention of every investor in America. And they're trying to figure out how to be a part of it. And that's the brilliance of what you have. The truth of the matter is, is they're inventing and creating these unicorns, you know, these software firms and these ideas. And the food service that's coming out of this missionary return and seeing some kind of cool Brazilian steakhouse or seeing some of the, Zuppa's does two and a half million dollars a year in soup and salad on the old plum tree, the Mix, and there's nothing there to support it. Cafe Rio does four million dollars a year in burritos on the Mix. And they're the only two things that are there. The Olive Garden is the busiest Olive Garden in the Western United States. And they haven't spent a dime on the place. I'm willing to donate money so they'll decorate the exterior so it matches the money that we're gonna spend in the Mix. You guys have so many good things. Don't think that it's all negative, but be very aggressive in how you attend to maintaining the quality of life and the cool factor of Provo.
So we're about out of time. We'll let you jump in real quick.
I just want to say something quickly. Because this is not meant to be, hey, let's dump everything on the council. I think that everyone here understands the depth of responsibility that you have, but also with that responsibility comes a lot of power and position and responsibility to us. I will say personally, it concerns me that JJ can sit here and say, I've been heading leasing there and I've never seen a council member come to my doors. We should never have just these opportunities to talk, right? We should always feel free to flow into each other's offices and talk about these things. Because we all sit and represent very different things. The only thing that's similar about me and Mark is we have the same zoning. And I'd like to sit and just talk about that just briefly. Because at the end of the day, you do control zoning. And I would ask you, does SC three zone still meet the needs of this shopping center and what the Mix needs? I'm gonna tell you, my opinion is an absolute, absolute no. And I would ask you, if you haven't, look at PD thirty-four, which is the zoning for University Mall. Check that out and then check out your own SC three zone. Like Mark said, you want to know why you're getting your butt kicked? Start looking at the base. Look at the foundation of what we're building retail on. Is it meeting what the retailers need? At the end of the day, I'm gonna ask each of you a question. I want you to answer honestly. Quinn, when you wake up in the morning taking downtown Provo, are you comfortable?
With downtown Provo?
Yep. Okay. Mark, are you comfortable with the Mix?
I'm excited for the future.
Okay, but are you comfortable? When you wake up every morning like, man, I'm the most comfortable person in the world.
No, I got thirty acres of vacant space.
Hey, you wake up, are you comfortable with the Riverwoods?
Never.
No. We're never comfortable. So my question to you is, no answer, I just think about this internally, when it comes to retail, are you comfortable? If you are, I think we all say that's a problem. But if you are comfortable, what are you comfortable with? And that's good. But start asking yourself, what am I uncomfortable about? Because all of us are uncomfortable. Because we know, because right, we look at operations, we look at marketing, we look at leasing, we look at housekeeping, security, you know? I look at everything. All of these guys look at everything. They just can't look at the good stuff and say, eh, everything's great, there's grown birds around them. So for us, it's to give you guys enough of our knowledge and say, we want to empower you. Every single one of us wants to empower you. Because I'll speak for myself, I know how many people depend on me to do a good job. I know that your body depends on me to do a good job. I've got an entire city that's looking to me to do a good job. And I wake up every morning and that's the first thing that comes to my mind. And I have tenants, hundreds of them, who depend on me to do a good job. So we need partnerships. We need to work together. We need to be honest with each other. Is it gonna be perfect? Absolutely not. Retail's gonna change faster. We could probably get something working great and then retail goes, we're gonna change everything. Great, here we go again. But I would just ask you, be uncomfortable. Because I think whilst we are honest with each other in our uncomforts and our level of stress, I think that's where we're gonna find solutions. I truly do.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. And that leads right into something I'd like to wrap up with, but Mr. Connect wanted to make a comment first.
Just wanted to follow up with JJ. We've got thirty-four neighborhoods and I know all the neighborhood chairs. I've met them all, worked with them. I don't know all the businesses. And we need to do a better job of bringing the different businesses, I mean, you know, Quinn represents a number of businesses, but I don't know all of the ones that he represents. And there, we need to do a better job of finding a venue, an opportunity for us to interact, uh, whether it's, you know, coming to council meetings or we come to your meetings. There's gotta be some, uh, way to inter, interconnect and get to know each other better.
Yeah. No, I, I totally agree. Thanks David. Because that, one, I'll just say one thing. Um, to that point, I, I always thought, wouldn't, and Gary was talking about the project across the street that was going in. There was so much going on with that project. The neighborhood was talking, everyone was talking, but Riverwoods didn't, didn't have really a voice in that, in that fight, I guess that way you could call it a fight. And so, but we were, we're a big part of the neighborhood and there, and there's two billion dollar companies that are right there next to us. And they wanted to have an opinion, but they can't have an opinion because they're not necessarily Provo residents, but they do have a lot to do with that neighborhood that way. So I think, I think that's important. So I totally agree with you.
We have to get emails. We, we definitely, I, I know I personally got that message loud and clear from, from Riverwoods supporters, right? We got that loud and clear, even though maybe you weren't the one delivering it.
Sure.
It was still delivered by email and conversations and those kinds of things. So-
Okay, good.
So as a follow-up to this, and I really appreciate your coming, this has been very, I think stimulating would be the word I would use, but I would like to propose if the three of you, the four of you are interested that we, uh, have you coordinate with council staff and, and, and provide an opportunity for as many council members that want to, to meet with you. Could be like a breakfast meeting or a little tour of your area. Uh, these would be small meetings, one, two or three council members, as many as are interested to get to know you better and, and find out more about what you're doing, what your concerns are.
In that regard, um, we'd already had one meeting here at the mall. Our, our council members were able to come and meet with these guys. Um, and the plan is to meet with these others and have some tours. We just haven't set them up yet.
Okay, great. Great. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jason. Yeah.
So we, we have one more group.
Thanks for being blunt. I appreciate that. This has helped.
Yeah, very helpful. We have one more presentation and discussion here. This is, this will be, we'll welcome Doug Munson and-
Dayon.
Dayon.
Eskich.
Eskich. Thank you. And these are from MTN and we'll have you describe what your organization is a little bit more, but I understand we're gonna have a sort of presentation and discussion about West Provo market trends and that sort of thing. So.
Well, thank, thank you for the invite and, and I'm hoping that our message is consistent with what you guys are, are looking for. Um, we got a, a call from David, uh, Monday and I'll give you some background on our company, but, um, to talk about, uh, West Provo. Our, our sweet spot in our consulting firm, MTN Retail Advisors, is groceries. So we're a, a Salt Lake based, uh, grocery consultant. We work across the United States. Um, ironically, seventy percent of our work is on the east coast, mid-Atlantic. We do work in, in, uh, the Intermountain West with chains like, uh, Smith's, Harman's. Um, so what our company does is we're unique in that we, we do work with developers, consulting work with developers. Uh, we work with municipalities. Uh, and more importantly, we work directly with grocery chains. So we understand all the dynamics that are at play between, again, developer, municipality a, and grocery chains and, and, um, so I think we bring a unique perspective. I myself came up through Smith's Food and Drug Centers, um, through their research, real estate department. So, um, I, and, and from a operational perspective, I worked at Smith's when they opened up the Provo store. I was in the produce department. So I've watched, you know, I've watched retail from different perspectives. Um, at Dayon, he's been with us for, what, six months now? Um, so he's relatively new to, uh, the, the site location, market research side of, of retail. Um, there, there are just a couple points that, that were made that I, I do want to stress, uh, about site selection and real estate from a grocery perspective. Um, and Mark had suggested it. I can tell you at Smith's, when I started in the real estate department in nineteen ninety-five with Smith's, we had ten real estate people, okay, representing the same geography as they, relatively the same. We were just divesting out of California, but we had about the same store count even after the Kroger merger. Today, um, as of today, there are two people running real, that are running real estate for Smith's. Um, I can tell you the Harman's, unfortunately, they lost, uh, their, their real estate director, John Ward passed away several months ago- John Ward passed away several months ago. So, even Harman's has been scrambling from a real estate perspective. We do a lot of work with the independents. So, we were instrumental in getting Lee's Market into North Salt Lake, a very interesting parallel dynamic to what you're facing in West Provo. So, Lee's Market went into the west side, on the west side of I-15, right on the bountiful North Salt Lake border and opened up about... Gosh, I guess they're going about six or eight months ago that they opened up. But going back to the whole, the limited resources in real estate, in these real estate departments, and again, it was addressed earlier. What I'm finding out there nationally is if you're a developer or you're a municipality and you're not taking the proactive position to market yourself, do not think... And Stuart, you work with a lot of different retailers, but I can tell you, and I think you're probably seeing the same thing. But if you're not promoting yourselves, if you think these guys are sitting in real estate committee meetings and they have a strategy and they're saying, "I need to be here in two years and here in four years," it's not happening. The municipalities that I'm seeing that are successful are taking, proactively taking that, you know, the information in their hands and whether it's residential growth and defining that and going to the retailer, whatever they're doing to take to the retailer and help promote, those are the groups, those are the municipalities, those are the developers who are seizing opportunities. So, I just wanted to put that out there. What I want to do, and again, I hope I'm consistent with what David had asked, is just give you guys perspective on what, from a grocery standpoint, what are the critical elements that grocers are looking at? I can tell you, when I worked at Smith's, we were looking at... So, again, I'm going back to 1995 to 2000. We were looking at the west side, Center Street, Geneva. Smith's had interest in that location forever. And I don't think it's because of a lack of interest over there. I don't think it's a lack of intent, but, you know, just like the rest of retail, grocery is cyclical. It's funny to watch grocery chains. It's funny to watch the pre-economic downturn. I can tell you, grocers were willing to lose money at a location, not a lot, but willing to lose it to maintain market share. A great case in point is, I'm gonna tell you that if you were presenting to Smith's probably five or six years ago, the relocation of the Provo Smith's to a marketplace, I know that was one of the things that was looked at, right? How do we convince Smith's to take a sixty-five thousand square foot box and flip it and come up with a hundred and ten thousand square foot box? It's about timing. If you'd have presented that to them five years ago when they were defending market share and Kroger had a lot of money back in them and they wanted just to keep, you know, keep other grocers out, they would have done that deal. They would have looked at cannibalization effects, sister store effects, net new sales and said, "Well, you know what? It's worth it. Yeah, we're eating our own pocket here. We're not getting a lot of gain." But they would be willing to do it. And now, the reality, again, from a grocery standpoint, and you guys all know, grocery is different than most retail. Razor-thin margins, not a lot of room for error. I will tell you, they bring more science, I think. I'm a little bit prejudiced, but Stuart, I would say grocers probably bring more science than any other retail channel out there because of the razor-thin margins. They can't make errors. But now with this whole internet impact that's going on and now Amazon and Whole Foods, and I think what's happened directly from that is chains like Kroger, who owns Smith's, their stock is down. Just, I mean, across the board, grocery stocks are down. So, now grocers, who, again, six months ago were worried about this internet thing, a year ago, a little bit worried about it, two years ago, just kind of watching it happen, not really doing things, now they're pulling capital away from development, capital development, and they're putting it into technology and pricing. So, I'm throwing a lot at you. There's a lot of dynamics out there, but I can tell you that Smith's, again, Smith's back in ninety-five was looking at that west side of Provo even before now, as the growth has started to really go linear along towards Orem there. I... Again, at the end of the day, the dilemma for them is, how do we get enough volume here to be profitable and not take away volume from our existing store? David had us commissioned just to run this study, and I'm sorry, I should have pulled it up, but I can tell you off memory, for Smith's to build a fifty thousand square foot store on the west side, it was a four hundred and forty-five thousand dollar per week projection. A pretty decent projection for Smith's. The complicating factor was when we looked at the impact on the downtown store, downtown Provo, they were taking a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars away from their downtown store. So, net new, here's Smith's doing three hundred and thirty-five thousand a week.
Is there any chance that the downtown store will benefit and have that loss replaced by all the new people that are moving into downtown?
I think so, but again, I'm talking, you know, going back to that cyclical effect, that's why I say if it was even the west Provo, if that... If we were sitting five years ago when they were trying to make that decision, I think they're willing to look at, to make assumptions about growth. I'm telling you, the economic downturn had a huge psychological impact on chasing rooftops. I mean, we watched it in... We watched it in the Los Hatch Front, we watched it in Phoenix, we watched it in Vegas. Grocers now in their pro forma, they aren't willing to say, "Hey, I'm willing to take a loss and I'm gonna assume because there's residential growth coming, I'm just gonna assume that I can backfill." I think that's a psychology that they're putting in their pro forma and they're not willing to assume. So, again, to answer your question, it's a timing thing. I just think that simply if they were, you know, if we didn't have the events that have happened over the last ten years, I think they probably could have made that decision. So, what we had to follow it back to was running for independents, running for... We ran a study for Lee's Market based out of Logan, as I mentioned. They opened up in Davis County. Ridley's, whom I think you guys know, they're Boise, excuse me, Idaho-based, Twin Falls-based, very opportunistic group. They opened up in Eagle Mountain. They took the Albus's locations in Orem, two of those locations. So, we did look at West Provo for those groups, and we do think, we're still trying to push that up the ladder with those groups. But again, just across the board, grocers, just the grocery community is just skittish with what's going on out there. So, I... Let me step back. I do want to give you some comfort on what the dynamics grocers look at. Because I was talking with David yesterday, you know, he had mentioned to me, you know, give some clarity on what it is that grocers want. Is it traffic count? Is it demographics? Is it competition? And I can tell you, as we go out and do a study, we're consistent with exactly how the grocers do it. The first thing they're gonna look at is the competitive landscape. So, yes, obviously, the demographics are important, I'll get to demographics, but the first thing a grocer's gonna look at, let's take West, again, using West Provo as example, the first thing they're gonna recognize is there's really no competition over there. So, they're gonna start looking at how much population there is. They convert population into per capita weekly grocery expenditure. So, at the end of the day, the grocer knows on the west side of Provo, how many grocery dollars are available. And then they'll start looking at the fact that, okay, there's no grocer directly there, where is the volume going to? So, they look competitively. So, even when Smith's is looking at it, they have a good handle on where their customers are coming from. They know how, what percent are coming from the west side of Provo. I can tell you, even if it's... Now, again, the independents aren't as sophisticated, and Lee's doesn't have any store base here, so... But what Lee's wants to know is, where are those people on the west side? Where are they driving to right now to shop somewhere for grocery? So, our challenge is to figure out on that west side, and again, it's a little linear, as you guys know, it's a little... It's linear, and then you've got the lake bordering it. So, the challenge is to understand, first, where are the customers going to between all the grocery opportunities they have? And then if I put a store here, how much can I capture? How much of the potential that is leaving this market can I capture? Is it enough potential that I can support a store? So, again, we're looking at competition, population, we're looking at road networks, right? Grocers wanna be on a strong road network. And they're gonna look at growth, like you mentioned. Is there growth that we can sustain, you know, some opportunity here? And then again, it's cannibalization. I, you know, again, for a group like Smith's, it's just not gonna work. The way you're gonna be able to... The only way I see really in the foreseeable future for the west side of Provo to secure a grocer is to get somebody like a Lee's that's got flexibility, come in here with thirty thousand square feet, something smaller, twenty-five, thirty. They'll want an ability to expand, so they'll have, hopefully, on the property, some expansion rights. Where they can grow with that, you know, as the population grows over there, they can add square footage to keep up with it. But still, I'm telling you, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge. As somebody was talking about Riverwoods, what it faces, I don't remember if that was Mark or if Stuart talked about it, but you look at Riverwoods, but it up against the mountain. We've done, we did studies for Whole Foods several years ago on Riverwoods, and they looked at it and they said, "There's no way we wanna go up against the mountain. We don't wanna go against the one hundred and eighty degree trade area." You're gonna get a little bit of that on the west side of Provo because they're looking at the lake, it's not gonna grow, obviously, and you're constrained on where your growth is. And the other challenge you get on a dynamic like the west side of Provo is that there will still be people who are willing to, even if you have a grocery store in their backyard, that are still coming over here for other needs, right? They're coming here for clothing and QSR and other needs. They will still, if you don't have the right type of grocer on that side or a big enough grocer, giving enough, providing enough amenities, they're still gonna leak out of that west side of Provo into downtown areas. So, all I'm telling you is it's got challenges. The good news is, like I said, I've seen, Stuart, I don't know if you've seen Lee's over in North Salt Lake, but very similar. They've got the Legacy Highway behind them, to the west of them, and then obviously the Great Salt Lake. But Lee's made a decision, they had enough growth over there, they felt like they could capture enough in their own backyard that would sustain a, you know, a viable operation. The other dynamic you have is, you know, when you have a west side like that, is we're running projections for grocers on that side, we rarely make the assumption you're gonna pull somebody from the east side to make that drive to the west side, right? They're just likely not gonna do it. So, your whole site and the success of your store is predicated on, do you have enough people right around that store that can sustain the operation? So... Anyway, I don't know if I have addressed your issue. Certainly happy to talk larger, you know, grocery perspective beyond that, but...
So, if you've looked at the smaller grocery stores of Lee's and the Ridley's, have they said there's enough population? Because you're not gonna pull, the freeway cuts it, trying to get across the freeway is so boring.
Let me tell you where we're at. We, again, David Waldorf commissioned us. We have the study done. We feel comfortable with the sales projection. Right now, we're trying to get it in front of Lee's and Ridley's. I think there's a case for it. I really do. I think, I'm afraid that Ridley's is gonna be out of the equation. I think they've got so much under play right now. And I do know that they aren't doing as well in Eagle Mountain as they thought they would, so I think they're having to kind of retrench there. I'm optimistic, cautiously optimistic that we can get Lee's to come in with a smaller footprint and to build on that. But to this, at this point, we just haven't had the dialogue, the direct face-to-face dialogue with them.
Even a smaller group, I've heard of Steve Day, Day's Market. I'd love to come out to the west side, and I am certain that as soon as I start to make this a successful store, Smith's gonna come in and undercut, I can't compete with them. And that's the problem that he's facing with that.
It's a huge, for that independent, it's a huge dynamic, right? It's a huge risk. Because all it would take, all of it would, it would just simply take, not even Smith's going out there, it would take Smith's making the commitment to the marketplace, right? Smith's building a marketplace onsite here would definitely reach across, further across I-15 into that west side. So, I get it with these independents, that they... The ones I've seen, and again, Lee's is a good example, the ones that I've seen successful under those circumstances is if they don't go in with just a vanilla offer, a vanilla offering. They go in and they say, "I'm going to..." We heard it on this panel, that it's the retailers, even grocers, that can go in and differentiate themselves. I think the days of the vanilla conventional grocer are over. I really do. And I hate to talk about Allen's and Day's, but the days of Allen's just opening up their door, I mean, the only reason I, again, I don't mean to pick on them, but the only reason most conventionals survive is because there's a lack of friction. Utah's a great example of that. At the end of the day, we don't have a tremendous amount of grocery friction. We've got Harman's, Macy's, Smith's, and we've got a smattering of independents, and we've got Walmart. But to that point, I don't know that a Day's is able to really go over there and really differentiate themselves. What I've seen from Lee's is they'll go over there and they'll open up a salad bar. They'll do things to make it market-specific, trader-specific, so people won't leave and go to, need to go to a QSR. But that's a very valid point. I mean, you make a, you know, even a small investment of eight to ten million dollars, you know, on a location like Day's, and the risk they run if somebody opened it up something... Even somebody going into, on the Orem side, right? To what's, I know there's a lot of talk about Vineyard. All it would take is somebody go over there like a Smith's and you've got a complicating factor over there for you.
Question. Yes? A small-sized store would be like a Day's?
Say that again.
Be like a Day's size? A bigger?
I think that, I think right now, you'd probably be looking at about a twenty-five thousand square foot store.
What is Day's?
Up in Rock Canyon, I wanna say they're probably only, they may be only fifteen or eighteen thousand. Yeah, they're smaller. What I've seen of, Ridley's made the commitment, excuse me, not Ridley, Lee's made the commitment of a forty thousand square foot store in North Salt Lake, but they have expansion rights. Again, I think we ran, tell me what we ran, on four Lee's on the west side? But what was the size?
Thirty-five.
We ran a thirty-five thousand square foot for Lee's. And I even think they could pare that down to a twenty-five additionally, twenty-five thousand square foot.
What size of piece of ground would it take to support that?
For that, you know, four acres, you know, to get a good parking fill. The great thing about grocers, and you guys probably recognize this, again, I'm prejudiced, I work in grocery business all day long, but if you can get a grocer there, you can generally get other services, right? You can get, hopefully, someone to open up a, you know, a salon. You can get a Subway over there. It's certainly what you build off of. But yeah, I would guess they're gonna need four acres to put, you know, to put something over there. And again, going back to the original theme, what I talked about and what's been talked about, I think what, as we engage, you know, we're gonna work with David on engaging Lee's Market, but for you as a community, as a council, to be there to support, to really give, you know, whatever it's... I don't get into his sentence, but anything you can give him is surety that if he's going into something like that, he's got community support. I mean, that's a lot of times enough to get somebody, even at a razor-thin margin, even with not a lot of profitability, if they can understand the communities in back of them, as they grow, they're gonna have that support. That means a lot, especially to the independents, especially to the smaller independents.
You know, we've talked a lot about Smith's, and we know that they're really focused on marketplace development and on building small stores now, but Kroger, the parent company, has a number of other offerings, like Main &amp; Vine and some other things. Is there potential for that? Could we break that, break into that Kroger world with a smaller format store that, again, wouldn't necessarily cannibalize what's happening downtown because they have a more narrow market bench?
Eventually. To be blunt, they're looking at Main &amp; Vine in Seattle, downtown Denver. Right now, they're looking at very dynamic markets. To go to Smith's, we're actually engaged with a developer in Reno, downtown Reno. Very dynamic redevelopment in downtown Reno, of course, Smith's is in Reno. And we tried to get Smith's to even look at the Main &amp; Vine there, and it's gentrifying this area, and they're, Kroger, Cincinnati's shooting down saying, "We're not going to Reno with that concept." So, I, unfortunately, I think you're five years out before they really understand that concept.
Part of the challenge is we've got Smith's owning ground, you know, which again, certainly would make a Day's or even a Lee's potentially a little nervous about trying to locate there when Smith's owns a good-sized piece of property right down the street.
There's not room for two. I mean, the reality is, again, not Day's concerns withstanding. Somebody goes on that west side, there's just not enough room, really. that west side, that there's just not enough room really on west Provo to split. I, I think at that point, I think Smith's would have to step out of that, and would. They wouldn't be fighting that battle. Again, I'm a little concerned, 'cause Vineyard does, you know, Vineyard's got opportunities, that's where a lot of growth is, so that could have an impact on the Lee's.
We're gonna see some high-density housing now occurring just north of, 2000 north, 2000 south, in Orem, and that's, that certainly would drive some level of retail interest.
Right.
Could be a lot closer.
So we're looking at redoing the, or rethinking the west side, we have a west side planning committee. Part of it is maybe having some open space, maybe keeping some agricultural, and taking that density that could've been built there and transferring it to somewhere else, so you could have pockets of higher density somewhere, usually that's at main intersections. And just hypothesizing, the committee could recommend that where Smith's currently has property, that it be rezoned for residential, and that something else be rezoned for commercial retail.
Sure, yeah.
In which case, it wouldn't be competition or...
That's right. I mean, yeah, you've effectively, you know, eliminated. Again, please understand, I've not, I don't represent Smith's, we certainly do work with them, I'm just kinda my perspective, I just do not see Smith's going out there. And, and again, Stuart's in this world, it's one thing if that was Smith's making the decision, when that Cincinnati, Smith's takes these sites to Cincinnati, and they look at, sorry, but west, the west side of Provo, Utah, whenever in Atlanta, and they're in, name the market, Smith's is not gonna, for a long time, unless something changes majorly, Smith's is never gonna get the capital.
Why do they hold the land then? Why don't they sell back now?
I don't know. I mean, that, that may be something for, I don't know if you guys have engaged with or with Smith's about that, I don't know.
And, and as long as they hold it, someone wouldn't necessarily wanna locate close by because they fear...
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that could be a lot of it. I mean, they're just holding it to keep somebody out, you know, that's what businesses do, right? So, I mean, they're always, you know, they understand that if they, if they sell that, the probability of somebody going on that west side goes in, if that, if that, if that, you know, a Lee's goes on the west side and does 250,000 a week, well, you know, a lot of that's coming out of the Smith's downtown, you know, a percentage-wise, not dollars-wise, but, so yeah, I mean, look, it's a chess game with these retailers, especially with grocers, you know, so I, I'm assuming they're into the land at a, at a pretty, pretty low basis, they've owned it forever, so. Any other questions? Again, I, I hope that gave you a little bit of, you know, enlightenment, as I mentioned to David, there really is no silver bullet, and, and I mean, the grocers, there's just a lot of things, variables they look at, but, but I would tell you that, yeah, I mean, certainly anytime they can see there's a lack of competition, that raises their, you know, their interest, but there's so many dynamics, it's, it is demographics, it's road networks, it's the ability of customers to pull. I mean, you're, you're talking about a daily need, obviously in grocery, and, you know, they've gotta have the surety that they've got enough daily needs surrounding that store to support it, so. We'll certainly keep David updated, I'm optimistic, we'll get in front of Jonathan Badger of Lee's, he's, he's always been very responsive to us, I, I just think he's, he's just under a lot of pressure opening up a couple new stores, but we'll certainly do our best to, to make the case to him, and, and hopefully we can convince him like we did in North Salt Lake, that there's an opportunity over there. It would change the dynamic, certainly.
Great, thank you very much. Good luck with that.
Okay.
We're rooting for you.
I'm sure you are.
If there's no objection, we'll declare the meeting adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks to all who participated and, you know, prepared for this.